If I can ask members of council to please come into the council chambers. Members of council, please come into the council chambers. Members of council, could you please come into the council chambers? Members of council, please come into the council chambers. Members of council, can you please, oh, there's Counselor DiGiorgio. Okay. Members of council, this meeting is now resumed. Members, can we please rise for a moment of silence and please remember Rockwell Reel. Thank you. John, John, my screen, the system is locked. Mayor Torry.
Well, Madam Speaker, just in one minute, I wanted to update to members of council and seek their help on the fundraising efforts that are happening through the Toronto Strong Fund that has been set up and to tell you that with the help of lots of people at the Toronto Foundation and here at the city and my own office that we've been sort of adding things that should have been there from the beginning, but it's only been two days and now we have as of this morning an opportunity where people in Toronto can more easily text a donation in, which I think a lot of people will find easy, and they just have to text the word Toronto to the number 80100, 80100, and that will facilitate people making donations. And I'm pleased to tell you that with the help of a number of corporations, but also a lot of individuals who are now getting involved in things like employee campaigns inside companies, there are lots of companies that said they will match what their employees do and so on, that as of this morning, after only two days, we're at $1.184 million, and I think that number is going to continue to rise quite rapidly. But I would ask if members of council have the opportunity through their own social media followings to publicize the text address, which I think now makes it easier in addition to the torontofoundation.ca website address where you can also make a donation to publicize that. Obviously, we want to collect a lot more than $1.184 million, as much as that's a great start, and so I would enlist your help, but we were enlisting the help of some of the different radio audiences this morning to try and get this some really terrific momentum because the more you hear the stories, and of course, they've been emerging as people unfortunately have been identified and who the people are and their circumstances and including those who are injured where those stories haven't started to come out yet, but they're equally heart wrenching, I think the more we know that it would be the Toronto way beyond what government can do to help some of these agencies and so on that can help these families. So I hope people will help us to get this word out today. And again, it's Toronto, you text the word Toronto to 80100 and/or go to Toronto, you go to torontofoundation.ca. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Members of council, we will now review and confirm the order paper. There are 22 items left on the agenda. Council had previously timed items CC 39.4, the Ombudsman 2017 Annual Report, and item EX 33.8 on the Smart City Challenge Update as our next items of business. Today's meeting must end by 7:00 PM under council's policy of ending meetings before sundown on Fridays to permit religious observance. I will now take the release of member hold. Please put your name under request to question staff. Counselor McMahon.
I just wanted to, if I could, add something to the mayor's speech in that they are also looking for blood donations, so if you have a blood donor clinic or you know of one in your ward, if you want to promote that, there is one in the Beach United Church this afternoon in the beach. If you'd like more details on that, let me know, but that's also something to help with the victims of the trauma. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, as soon as I find it. It's the bottom of page number four, I'd like to release TE 31.106, the 2018 bum run event.
Okay, on page four, TE 31.106, Counselor Holliday is releasing, on favor, recorded?
Counselor DiGiorgio, please. Counselor McMahon. Counselor Shan, please.
The item carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Counselor Shan.
Madam Speaker, I'm not too sure if this is a quick item because the mayor, the item is on page three, CD 27.3, Proposed Canada-Ontario Toronto Memorandum of Understanding on Immigration and Settlement. I understand the mayor and Counselor Pasternak have motion to add, so if I could, if those could.
I'd be prepared to move it now.
The mayor's motion has been circulated, so I don't know if it's a quick item. Mayor Torry?
If I could help, just my motion is simply one that, what's the word I'm looking for, summarizes the requests we made of the provincial and federal governments yesterday in a news conference to help us with refugee shelter, so I would think it's non-controversial and that we, and I was accompanied there by a number of members of council, so that's what my motion is, and it has been circulated. So I don't think it's going to be controversial, but who knows?
Okay, so members of council have received it on their desk, is it a quick item?
I'd be happy to move my motions now, I think they're clear.
He wants to hold, so I'll continue to hold.
Counselor Kerr-Jannas said to hold. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Speaker, page three, EX 30.6, Review of the Imagination Manufacturing Innovation and Technology Property Tax Incentive Program. Counsel Perks has had his concerns addressed, it's an ongoing process, we will be dealing more in details with Counselor Perks matter, and I would like to simply move this and thank the staff for the report that's in front of us. It's an appropriate opportunity for us to help business, and we are going to refine this, okay?
So is everyone okay with that? That's on page, top of page three, EX 30.6?
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote?
Counselor Kerr-Jannas, please, when you're ready, and Counselor Davis. Counselor Pasternak, please. Counselor Layton, please, your vote, Counselor Layton.
The item carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm wondering whether we could have CD 27.3 immediately following the two items as first items of business today, so in other words, have it heard after EX 33.8, Smart City Challenge.
Okay, so Counselor Pasternak is moving that? Is everyone okay with that? On favor, carried? Now, on page four, I mean, on page five, there's two members' motions that were in, that were introduced yesterday and hasn't been held down, so do we want the movers to move it? Counselor Troyce, MM 39.31? Sorry, Counselor Kerr-Jannas? It was circulated yesterday and it's on your pink sheet? It just needs to be? No? It was circulated yesterday? No? Yeah, it's not held, we're just moving it. Yeah, are we prepared to move it now?
I'd like to move it, Madam Speaker.
Okay. On favor, carried? And then, on page five, MM 39.32, Counselor Matlow, was introduced yesterday, would you like to move it?
I'd be happy to move it.
Oh, there's questions on that? So we'll hold it. Yes, held by Counselor Holliday. All right. Do we have 30, we have 30 members? There are some members' motions to be added, but we don't have 30 members, so, no, I know. So all those in favor of adopting the order paper, on favor, carried? Okay, so we'll go to our first item of business, which is CC 39.4, which is on the top of page five, which is the Ombudsman Report. Okay.
Madam Chair, should I go ahead or?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of council, thank you for this opportunity to prevent, to present the, briefly present the 2017 Annual Report from Ombudsman Toronto. This is actually the ninth annual report of the office, and it's the first annual report since I assumed the role of ombudsman in late 2016. As you know, my team and I work to hold the city administration accountable in its duty to treat members of the public fairly, and this report sets out how we did that and how we fulfilled our mandate in 2017. We have a very small, but very dedicated and hard-working team at Ombudsman Toronto. We have 12 permanent positions, including my own, and in 2017, we handled 1,646 complaints from members of the public who felt that they had been unfairly treated by the city and whose efforts to resolve the matter directly with the city had been unsuccessful and unsatisfactory to them. And as noted on the slide, that was a 7% increase in number of complaints from the prior year. The topics of the complaints that we dealt with covered the full range of services that the city provides, which, as you know, I don't have to tell you as city councillors, are a very broad range of services. And some examples of the particular cases that we dealt with are laid out in the report, beginning at page 15. In 2017, we completed three formal investigations, and I brought all of those to council, so you are familiar with them. They dealt with complex systemic issues relating to oversight of the TTC enforcement unit, park permit processes, and development charge complaints. But in addition to those three investigations, we conducted 521 inquiries. An Ombudsman Toronto inquiry is a flexible tool that we use to conduct an informal and a timely review of an issue, whether brought to us by a complaint or whether something that we identify as a matter of public concern. Some of our inquiries are very complex, and they resemble formal investigations very much, but others, as you can see, are wrapped up much more quickly. Almost half of our inquiries were wrapped up within seven days, and more than 65% were completed within one month. Inquiries are the day-to-day work of our office. My staff works very hard behind the scenes to understand the problem and to find a creative and fair way to resolve the situation when a city, when somebody feels that they've been treated unfairly. Some of our inquiries do result in public reports, and we do that when we believe it's in the public interest to do so. Those are posted on our website, a couple of them I've brought to council, but they're all posted on our website for transparency. Also very important, I draw your attention to the, to the circle at the bottom right corner of the slide, because really what our work about, is about ultimately, is about improving city services. And in 2017, we made 65 formal recommendations to make the way that the city treats members of the public fairer. That's really what it's about in the end, and I'm very proud of that, of that work. We also work proactively to try to promote and ensure fairness in city services and administration before it results in complaints, before it results in litigation. And in 2017, we consulted with city staff on 18 separate projects at their request so that we could inform them what the administrative fairness requirements were for the process or system being examined or designed, to help them understand and incorporate the legal requirements of administrative fairness. We also did a great deal of outreach, as you'll see on the, on the slide, both to the public and also to city staff. Of course, it's really important for people to know that we're here and what we do in order for us to have an impact and be effective. I would like to also mention that councillors routinely request a meeting with me, individual councillors, to discuss a difficult case or to seek my office's assistance for a constituent who has had a frustrating experience.
Just one moment, please, there's a lot of noise in the council chambers, please. Counselor Matlow? Counselor Holliday? Okay, thank you.
So I mentioned these meetings with councillors simply as another way that I and my office are assisting in the city at large in serving the public better. I can think of six meetings of that type just over the last few weeks. As you know, we are entirely accessible to the public. Members of the public can complain to my office by phone, fax, email, mail, in person, or through an online form. And while we can't, of course, guarantee the outcome that the complainant is hoping for, what we do is we listen impartially in every case, and we, our goal is to make sure that everyone is heard and that everyone knows that they have been heard. In terms of where the complaints come from in the city, there's a map on the, on the slide, this has remained remarkably constant, actually, throughout the life of the office. There has been a larger proportion, even when you take into account population differences, there's a larger proportion of complaints from Toronto and East York than from any of the other community council areas. In order to address this, we have continued to target our outreach specifically to North York, Scarborough, and Etobicoke, York, in an effort to ensure that people in those parts of the city know we're here and know how to reach us if they need us. Administrative fairness is what we deal with, and administrative fairness comes from the field of administrative law and provides a framework for how public services need to be delivered. This is the graphic illustration that we use of the requirements of administrative fairness and how it's structured. Everybody dealing with the City of Toronto administration is entitled to a fair process, a fair outcome, and fair treatment, which of course, as you know, means equitable treatment. As I like to point out, and as Counselor DiGiorgio actually reminded me, fairness is about the impact on people. It's not about the effort that public servants or others providing service put into it, it's about the impact and the, and the result. So we elaborate on this concept of administrative fairness and how it works at page four of our report. We also have a guide on our website for city staff. In terms of our findings, because as you know, we look at problems, we make findings, and then we make recommendations when appropriate, the findings are also pretty steady year to year in terms of the problems that appear most often, and number one is always inadequate communication. Clear and effective communication with the public continues to be something that the City of Toronto, which is a large and complex organization, needs to work on, and that includes, of course, its agencies, corporations, and boards, not just the city divisions. You've heard me say this before, and I expect you'll hear me say it again. It's important, I think, to note that the required communication has two parts. It is about providing clear, accessible, understandable, and useful information to people, but it's also about listening to people and trying to understand their needs, their concerns, and their problems. The work of Ombudsman Toronto, if I may say so respectfully, enhances public trust and satisfaction in our municipal government. I'm immensely proud of my team and of the work that we do and of the work that we accomplished in 2017, and if I may say so, I believe that the City of Toronto, this council, and the public are getting superb value from the very modest investment that is being made in our office. I feel privileged to serve as the city's ombudsman, and really, that concludes my presentation. I welcome questions, Madam Speaker, from any members of council who have any.
Thank you. Counselor Shan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you very much for all your work. I have a question, I have a couple of questions around the percentage of complaints, you know, Scarborough had about 20%, so in your outreach strategies, has that been taken into consideration, where more effort of the outreach, you know, you had some statistic that showed stakeholder engagement and so on, has that been disproportionately adjusted so that it takes care of areas that have less complaints?
We continue to work on and to look for ways to do increased outreach in areas of the city that we feel aren't accessing our services proportionately. We had three specific community engagements in 2017. We attended MPP Su Wong's Annual Health and Government Information Fair, we went to a Community Association Community Barbecue in Ward 41, and we also attended Tamil Fest. So we are always looking for opportunities to partner with councillors in any part of the city so that our message can be spread, but it is something we continue to work on.
Do you have disaggregated data that we can look at in terms of, you had the numbers in terms, percentage in terms of complaints, but the type of complaints, do they differ from area to area? Have that analysis been done, like, is it, is it from Scarborough mainly coming because of lack of communication or lack, you know, the categories you had? Has there been some look into whether there's a pattern?
We don't have that data currently. We have just brought onboard a new case management system with much more data gathering capability, so maybe I could speak with you later and we could talk about some ways we might be able to analyze things like that.
For example, in my area, there's a lot of perception, I need to know whether it's reality, that because of people who do not usually challenge, the communication levels from the city are much worse, like, when streets got closed, they don't let us know why it's closed, and then things happen, people aren't informed and so on. So is there a way to look at the data to see if that, that there is some patterns in terms of where lack of communications are, where more enforcement is, and so on?
Yes, there probably is, and I'd be happy to discuss that with you further.
And in terms of, in terms of language-based capacity to support, for example, North Scarborough, Scarborough itself is huge, geographically one-third of the area, and, and to break down, maybe there are areas that may be even less more likely to make complaints because one-third of the landmass with 25% of the population is huge. If there's ways to, even within Scarborough, there are areas that may be more likely to be participating. be participating actively than the other ones. Is there been some sort of a geographical disaggregation as well?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I think that makes sense. And again, I would invite Councillor Shan and your colleagues to, if you can help us with our outreach, for example, I know that you're in frequent communication with your constituents. If you would give us a little corner of your newsletter to inform them about us and our work and how to reach us, we would, we would welcome that opportunity.
The last, last question is the language.
We all get a corner.
Councillor Kerr-Jeanus.
So I think the question basically I'll ask for you, Councillor Kerr, is there a possibility for you to give the wording or the content for us to use, for all of us to use, if that's possible? The last question I have is-
Yes, certainly, I'll do that.
The last question I have is around language capacity in terms of people wanting to make complaints in different languages, particularly maybe the most spoken languages with respect to not so much capacity in terms of speaking in English, so whether it be Cantonese, Mandarin, or Tamil, or different languages that have higher newcomer population. Has there been some capacity addition on that?
Yes, through you, Madam Speaker. We use the same translation service that 3-1-1 uses, which offers translation in over 100 languages. And so when we have an intake interview which requires access to that, we can get immediate access to translation services.
Would you be able to provide some statistics on whether that has been used over the past couple of years? How well has that been used?
Again, I don't know that our past data permits that, but it's something very useful for us to watch, and we'll make a note to watch it going forward. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Pasternak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Madam Ombudsman, for this report. Just drifting through pages, I guess 15 to 17, you've listed off a number of different situations in which you've been involved. When I go to number five, improving information about appeals, property tax, I can see that you've sort of made a macro recommendation on how Revenue Services can fix their website and make it clearer. And I think that's very close to the mandate that you have in improving government. But then I start venturing into some of these, these other cases, and I am wondering at times how you're spending your time. You're venturing into sort of surgical minutia where you're, you're working on individual microcases that are beyond the scope of actually improving government. I look at number six, saving a senior from eviction. Are you aware that we have a Commissioner of Housing Equity? I think it's Cynthia Summers, and her mandate is to actually work with at-risk tenants in our, in our social housing portfolio.
Through you, Madam Speaker. The, the Office of the Commissioner of Housing Equity deals with seniors and vulnerable tenants who are facing eviction because they haven't paid their rent. And this was a different situation, this was an unusual situation of a gentleman whose behavior had gotten him into trouble with TCHC. They'd gotten these eviction notices, but he was terminally ill, and the eviction would have posed a great hardship for him. So we basically mediated between him and TCHC. It's something that would have taken maybe a couple of phone calls, not more than that, but, but in my respectful submission, that also improves city government, because we, we are able to humanize the bureaucracy and to help resolve friction between individuals and the large city government.
So when you get a complaint about someone whose building permit is, is taking extra time, I see there's a, there's an appeal confusion over front yard parking. Do you first let the councillor's office try and resolve it at the local level before your office gets involved, or is this maybe sent off to 3-1-1? Both avenues of customer service that we have at the city?
Through you, Madam Chair. Our process is to require complainants, if they are able to, to raise the issue directly with the city department that they're, they've had a problem with. So for example, when it's a matter of a building permit, we would say, have you made your complaint to Toronto Building? And have you, you know, have you exhausted your avenues there? If they have, then that's when we get involved. It's not our practice to involve councillors, individual councillors, in the issues.
Well, do you see yourself as solving microproblems or reforming and making government better?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I see the role of my office as both of those things.
Now, you've made 65 recommendations through various reports in 2017. Was that considered, how would you benchmark that against previous years? Is that, is that above normal previous years, or is that a low, a low number?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I don't have the numbers right before me, but I would say it's, it's probably pretty typical. Some reports generate a great, large number of recommendations, and some generate only one or two. Some recommendations have very, very far-reaching consequences, we hope, that's the idea, and some of them are a bit, little bit less broad-based, but it's about typical, I would say.
I'll just, I'll just conclude by asking you, I mean, it strikes me as a small number in an organization that has an $11 billion operating budget, probably an extended reach of 50,000 employees, including all divisions. And we do a lot of things right, but we need to improve in a lot of areas. It seems low, and I'm wondering if you can respond to that.
Through you, Madam Speaker. I, I agree with you, but my staff seems low, too. I mean, we only have 12 people, so what we can accomplish in a year with 1,650 complaints coming in, we want to listen to complainants, we have many, many people, I should add, who call us and email us on a very, very frequent and troublesome basis. We have a lot of difficult challenges of that type, and we are as well trying to have a broad and systemic and profound impact on improving city government. So really, we, we have a balance that we try to strike within the restrictions of our resources. I would love to be making 650 sweeping recommendations, but unfortunately, within the current circumstances, this is, this is what we have done, and I'm very proud of it.
Thank you. Councillor Kerr-Jeanus?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, for you, I want to thank the, our accountability officer for being here this morning and the hard work that she's done. Certainly, I went to this firsthand, some of the work her office was done just before she, she got in the position, and I certainly welcome the fact that she will be providing us some language in order for us to move forward. Madam Speaker, however, I do want to ask this question of the audit general. There's cases that you worked on that unfortunately your office was not able to bring a successful passing on. And I'm wondering, what do you, what changes would your office make, and what mechanisms and what tools do you need that we can probably help you with in order to make sure that the cases that we bring forward to you that do not have an impasse are resolved?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I think it's, it's partly a question of how you define a successful outcome. We don't always achieve the outcome that the complainant is looking for. What we always aim to achieve is a thorough review of an issue and a determination whether there has been, excuse me, administrative unfairness. If there has, we call it out, we, we name it, and we recommend a resolution. So I think it's difficult to say a percentage of cases that are successful or unsuccessful. What we, what we benchmark ourselves on is whether we have performed a thorough review of the issue, made findings that we feel are justified by the evidence, and then made recommendations that properly flow from those.
I'm going to go to a specific case that certainly your office helped me with, but unfortunately, there was not a, the end result was not what we were looking for, and the end result is still something to be worked on. And I'm referring to the case of CNIB and one of my constituents, Donna Jodhan, that was trying to use TTC website in order, she's visually impaired, in order to be able to sign on for whale trans. And it's an 18-page form that TTC has. Now, I know that you folks did a lot of work, but unfortunately, the end result was not there. CNIB certainly recognizes that. CNIB was voicing those concerns, and Donna was voicing those concerns. I'm just wondering, what other tools can we use in order, when it comes at agencies of the city that are not reaching out to the people that are disabled, and especially the visually impaired?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm, never discuss individual cases, my office maintains confidentiality, but, you know, we, we look at issues, we see if we can find unfairness. We don't, as you know, make orders or tell city divisions or agencies or corporations that they must do something. We deal in persuasion and recommendation and, and speak, speaking out. And when we find an unfairness that we believe the public needs to know about, we say so. But beyond that, we don't, we don't, we can't make changes through force, we can only make changes in the ways that I've described.
Is it, my time, my time's up?
No, no, it's not.
Okay, thank you. Is it time that we provide you with the alternative, if you want to call it, the possibility of you issuing an order? Is it time that we give you, in your arsenal, the hammer that says to a city agency, you know, this was wronged, and you got to fix it? Is it time that we give you that part of the mandate for you to be able to bring down the hammer? Because in this case, and I know you don't want to discuss it, however, there was a press conference yesterday, and it's certainly on the web, in this case, it wasn't done, it wasn't followed through. Is it time that we give you what you need? We need you the hammer to say, you got to do it?
Through you, Madam Chair. Ombudsman work doesn't, the ombudsman work is a well-established field, and ombudsman offices exist throughout the world, and they don't have the type of hammer, if I can put it that way, that Councillor Kerr-Jeanus is describing. It wouldn't really fit with the model. The power that my office has is in our voice and in our ability to persuade city divisions, agencies, and corporations of the right thing to do. And I, I'm confident that, that we have those powers. There are often other considerations in terms of when, when we choose to, to speak publicly about cases and when we don't. But to answer the question directly, Madam Speaker, I don't believe that, that my office requires any additional powers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fletcher?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on something that you'd mentioned. Speaker ought to let me know if this is in order, but to follow up a little bit on your remarks about the Office of the Housing Equity Commissioner that Councillor Pasternak asked you about, and the role of that office in solving problems for tenants at Toronto Community Housing. It was established in order to circumvent having evictions based on non-payment of rent for people that just, for whatever reason, just couldn't get it figured out or fell, fell behind, right?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that's my understanding, yes.
And do you know if this office reports directly to the Board of Directors, or does it report through a vice president of the corporation?
Through you, Madam Speaker. My understanding is that the Commissioner reports directly to the Board of Directors of TCHC.
Could we make sure that's the case?
I'm sure that's the case.
You're sure that's the case?
Yes.
All right. And that there are, what is the advantage to your office, let's say, of having an Office of Housing Equity to take on some of these issues that might end up at your door for people that can't make it through the system? Is there an advantage to having that position at Toronto Community Housing for you and your workload?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Any, anything that helps members of the public in their dealings with a city organization like TCHC is an advantage, because that's what we, we are about. If, I assume that if that office weren't there, that might result in more complaints to my office, but I haven't really thought about it in terms of an advantage to my office, per se, before now.
Okay, just maybe more complaints, so and then you'd have more to deal with. So I guess it just offers another, another venue or stream for people that have a problem to have them resolved outside of coming to you.
Yes. The other, the other thing I would just mention, Madam Speaker, in response to Councillor Fletcher's question, is that my office, my small team, has to be kind of knowledgeable and learn about the full range of city services and programs. And, you know, one day we might be dealing with something with transportation services, and the next day it's TCHC, and the next day it's Toronto Hydro. So one thing about the, the Commissioner, I believe one of the reasons that was established is so that that office could establish and develop an expertise in the needs of senior and vulnerable tenants who are unable to make their rental payments.
And could vulnerable tenant, I'm not putting you on the spot, but be somebody who is poor, who has, having trouble paying the rent, falling behind, and needs help? Or is it someone who has a disability of some kind? How would you categorize vulnerable?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I think those questions would be better put to the Commissioner, because she knows her mandate much better than I.
And would you, I'm just going to ask you about best practice, that should a tenant be able to go directly to this office? Or would a tenant, should, and that office be able to, in your best practice, for certain position of that kind in an organization? Would someone have the option of going directly to the Housing Commissioner or continuing to work with the staff at an organization?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I'm not adequately familiar with the intricacies of the structure. What I can speak to is the way my office operates, and the way my office operates is that somebody, if somebody brings us a complaint, let's say, about MLS and what MLS has done or has not done, the first question my staff asks them is, have you raised this with MLS? Because our philosophy is that it's the city's right and responsibility to solve its own problems before we get involved. I don't know how the relationship between TCHC and the Commissioner of Housing Equity works and-
But you would not expect MLS to send you a case? It is coming from the public.
Well, sometimes, through you, Madam Speaker, sometimes MLS will send us a case, because if they have attempted to-
Well, let me just be clear.
-resolve a problem and not succeeded, they might send it to us.
But you would not require MLS or another city division to try to solve a case prior to you being able to discuss that case with a member of the public?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we, actually, we would, but, but as I say, that's the way my office operates, I don't know about the Commissioner's office. We require the discussion to happen first between the member of the public and the division.
That was your last question, Councillor Fletcher. Thank you.
I'd be happy to discuss this with you further.
Councillor Ainsley?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Speaker. Would you care to comment? So in March, you had a report that came out, and it had nine recommendations in it about how we're dealing with our shelter system and where we are now with those, the response to those nine recommendations. Are you happy with the response so far?
Through you, Madam Speaker. It's not in my 2017 report, because it wasn't in 2017, but I'd be happy to, to comment on that. We, we follow up on a regular basis on all of our reports, and yes, we believe that there is a lot of work being done specifically to deal with the two issues that we identified, one having to do with communication of winter respite services and the other having to do with conditions at the winter respite sites.
Okay, and the reason I raise that, because as well as you had that report with those recommendations, we also, the city council passed a motion that I put forward in January, asking that all of the information about our shelter system be put up in an open data format, and we're still waiting for that as well, I believe.
Through you, Madam Speaker, I'm not aware of the status of your request.
Okay. Thank you very much. You've put great work.
Thank you.
Councillor De Baermaker?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for all the good work that you and your office do. I'm just wondering, in terms of the workload, in terms of your budget this year, do you know just off, roughly, what your, what your approved budget is, what the request was, what you think it should be for next year, if this council wants you to do the work that you believe you should be doing?
Through you, Madam Speaker. My approved operating budget in 2017 was $1.81 million. That was down from 2016, when it was $1.83 million. And, you know, in an office like mine, what the budget means is people. And the people that I have working for me who do the, the core work of the mandate are investigators and complaints analysts who do intake. So, you know, I haven't yet formulated exactly what my budget recommendation will be for 2019, but certainly my investigators and complaints analysts are, are unable to do the work in the way and at the speed that they would like to if, if they had a bit more company.
Okay. No, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Speaker. So while you're not giving us a number, is it your opinion that you're sufficiently resourced to do the job we've tasked you to do? Or would you need additional funding? Or are you saying now, I'm at an equilibrium, we are making our way through the cases, and, you know, you're a happy camper?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I would- I would welcome more resources to do the job better. I, you know, we're mindful of the fiscal restraints that exist within the city and what we do now is we do our best with what we're given. I wouldn't want to be seen to be saying, we can't fulfill our mandate if you don't give us a larger budget. But that being said, we have a lot of complaints, we have a need for outreach into parts of the city that we're not adequately touching. We do have many, many consultation requests now from city staff and we could just do more and have more of an impact if we had a few more people on the ground.
And through you, Madam Speaker, would you agree with me that, again, with my office, my office's experience with your office, is that some complaints are dealt with relatively quickly, but on some of the larger cases in my office that we've put through your office, it's taken your office, through their due diligence and hard work, sometimes a year and a half, two years, to come to a resolution. And you have to scale mountains, scale walls to do, quote, "an investigation." It's not just a quick phone call and someone says, oops, yes, we made a mistake. Would you agree that sometimes when you first approach our departments, I won't call them defensive, but they'll throw down a stack of rules at you and say, hey, we followed the rules, this person's just out of luck?
Through you, Madam Speaker. We do get that kind of response. I would also say that from experience that I've noted, city staff generally is very busy and there are a lot of pressures on their resources. And even if they are intending to, which they usually are, to cooperate with us and to provide us with the information we need, we often have to go back many times to ask for it again or to ask for more. So it's a lot of legwork to follow through on a case, to get the information that we require, to see if there was a problem of unfairness, to make a finding, make recommendations. So yes, cases sometimes take a lot longer than I wish they did because of the small number of personnel, because of the amount of effort that's required to get through to the end.
And again, is my, I'll say, observation from my office similar to maybe, in your opinion, other offices where there's the message in the messenger? Sometimes people call us and you, if you think about what they're actually asking for, something about their water bill or something that's gone wrong, that the message actually is a correct one, but the messenger is so angry, so upset, so unpleasant, so toxic, that it doesn't surprise me that our staff just try to push them away because they're often rude and ignorant to our staff.
Through you, Madam Speaker. That's actually a consultation, a project that I'm consulting with now that I think is really important and is through the Acting City Manager's Office on how city staff can provide fair service to people even when it's difficult. And that may be because of the behavior of a complainant who's vulnerable, who has, who struggles with mental illness, or who's very angry, or who's just, for whatever reason, making it very, very difficult to serve them, and yet they have to be fairly served regardless. So that's a project that we're working on right now, which I hope will have far-reaching impact.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Shan to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. One of us to start by thanking them, but it's with the Ombudsman's Office and all the staff who have done amazing work in outreach and addressing some of the concerns that have been raised by residents. I echo the sentiment for increased support for our accountability offices and particularly, you know, this office deals with many of the direct services that we talk about, so I would definitely be supportive of expanding those resources. Having said that, I think it's very important for us to have more disaggregated data. Disaggregated data that talks about who is complaining, what is enabling them to complain, what are some of the resources that they have, and what are some of the resources the other places don't have, and how do we kind of have an equitable allocation of resources, whether it be language resources, increased outreach, and all these comes with staff people and staff persons to be dedicated for it. I would like to know, you know, where in Scarborough the complaints are coming from, which parts of the Scarborough, and what languages are being used for the multilingual support that we are providing, if these communities actually know that they would be able to make those complaints in those languages. So, you know, this has been, in our previous ombudsperson's report as well, we noted the same thing where certain areas are underrepresented. And this doesn't mean the complaints aren't there in those communities, it doesn't mean that these issues aren't there in these communities. This doesn't mean that they are not, they are perfectly happy with what the city is doing. In fact, there are two reasons. One, they do not maybe know the mechanisms to make the complaint. Second, the authority and the kind of power structures may be a bit intimidating for many people to come out and make a complaint and so on. So how do we make these things easier? I actually say, in my word, if more complaints come, that is a good thing because I know the need exists, the lack of communication, the enforcement related, all the different types of things that exist are there. So I would like to see more support. I would like to see more support for race relation-related complaints that come up. You know, we had an incident a couple of months ago, we haven't still gotten any concrete responses around the excessive force that was used by TTC law enforcement offices and what happened with that. So it's still ongoing. So these things need more resources, these things need a bit more structured investment. So for us to do that, we will need disaggregated data. We will need which are those complaints that are being resolved within 30 days and seven days and which are the complaints that are taking longer? Which departments are more responsive and which department actually may, or which divisions may actually need support themselves to be responding to these things? Maybe some of the divisions are not responding fast enough because they do not have the resources within those divisions to respond to complaints as well. So it is very important for us to go deeper on this. I look forward to meeting with the ombudsperson after this to kind of look at some ways to bring some more recommendations through my office, but looking forward to enhancing the accountability framework we have so that racialized people, low-income communities, geographically isolated communities are able to make the best use of the accountability office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pasternak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Once again, thanks to the Ombudsman's Office for the report, their presentation and their work. At the risk of sounding a little negative, I think they're too far over, all over the map here with many of the things they're doing. They're getting into minutia where they're making targeted phone calls to various divisions for a building permit that they're calling about property tax issues as well as making targeted calls into forestry about trees. I always thought the Ombudsman's Office was making government better. And I know I've said it many times before, but it seems that the people of Toronto don't want bigger government, they don't want smaller government, they want better government. And it's the responsibility of this office to make government better, to make it more responsive. By using resources and making strategic calls about trees and building permits and some other micro minutia things, they are actually doing the work of what 311 may do or a council's office may do. I've referred in my questions to the Commissioner of Housing Equity. The reference in here to the case of the TCH tenant who is being evicted did not describe him as a senior, but now that it's been clarified, I understand why this office took it over. Nevertheless, I think we have to look at the Commissioner of Housing Equity to make sure that they can take on these cases. The Ombudsman said that they have limited resources, they're stretched to the limit, and I think if they got out of the things that 311 should be doing, the council's office is doing, and the Commissioner of Housing Equity is doing, I think they will find that they have the resources to come back with recommendations and make government better. Now, I've got to tell you, 65 recommendations over the course of a whole year in an organization like the City of Toronto seems like a small number. And I'm not doubting they're putting in hard work, but, you know, when you have a coroner's inquest over one unfortunate fatality in unknown circumstances, you could get 150 recommendations out of one study like that. To find that we're only focusing in on 65 recommendations among 18 different policy areas means that we've got a lot of work to do. So those are my comments. We look forward to next year's report. That's my, those are my comments and my advice. And I once again thank you for the hard work, but let's stay focused on what the Ombudsman's Office is really here to do, and it's to make government better, to bring recommendations to council so that we can either adopt them or debate them and that the better, the people of Toronto are served better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Want to remind members of council that we need to finish the agenda today. Counselor DeBermaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Like my colleagues before me, I'd like to thank the Ombudsman and her office, sorry, for doing the great work that they do. When I look at the Auditor General's Office, that I see as, again, an oversight office that gives us, I'll call it quantitative data. They look at numbers, they look at statistics, they make qualitative improvements to the process, but their goal is to make the city better. And it's, I will say sometimes it's relatively easy to see that because there's a financial statement attached to it saying, we could save, could have saved in the past or could save in the future this amount of money. Certainly, I look at the Ombudsman's Office, I'll call it perhaps a qualitative office that gives oversight. Some of the investigations in my office that we've referred to the Ombudsman have been very, very complicated. And some of them have taken years to see to their conclusion. And I have to say, from my perspective, every one of the complaints that we have sent to the Ombudsman's Office has been resolved successfully. And when I say successfully, even if sometimes the individuals don't get what they want, they certainly feel that they, at the end of the day, been treated fairly, that they've been given a fair hearing, that people heard them, listened to them, respected them and had a final outcome. So again, even if they don't win or get what they want, they actually feel respected by the city. And I certainly, it's hard for me to put a price on that, but I know that that's what makes this city function and function very well, when we can actually listen to the people who have tried to get through this very complicated bureaucracy that we have, who don't know what the rules are, who don't know how to write a good letter, who don't know sometimes that if they get a wrong answer here, that they go somewhere else, or if like a ping pong ball, they go back and forth five, six, seven, eight, 15 different times, they just give up because they just, they just get too frustrated. So we need, our office role is to intervene and help our constituents. Sometimes, I'd say 90%, 95% of the times we help them, sometimes we can't. But I think the role of the Ombudsman is very important to help on those cases where even my office is frustrated and upset because despite how many times we knock on the door of staff, they don't listen to us or they disagree with us, or they give us a set of rules that says, well, you don't fit into this box number one or two or three, therefore we can't help the constituent. And when we say, but it's blatantly obvious to anybody who looks at this that this person hasn't been treated fairly, they'll say, well, Counselor, we followed all the rules. So I think the Ombudsman's intervention and the recommendations help make the city a better place to live. I certainly know through my office, sorry, some of the individuals who have come through my office are challenging individuals. Some of them might be vulnerable, some of them might have mental health issues, but some of them are just toxic people. Angry people, ignorant people, rude people, racist people, where I have to sit down with my staff and say, put all of that toxic stuff to the side. Forget it, forget that they called you a stupid immigrant. Forget all of that stuff. Let's actually look at the complaint and get past the messenger and see if there's actually something here that we should look into. And very often, despite the challenges of that individual who is angry and toxic and rude, we actually find underneath all of that, there is an actual complaint. And certainly, my office tries our very best to help those individuals, but sometimes when those individuals, for all, for reasons that sometimes are the messenger's own fault, they end up in the Ombudsman's Office. And by the time they reach one of those staff in that office, they've got a bee in their bonnet, they're angry, they're impatient, they have told their story five times already, yeah, they're done. And so I understand why the Ombudsman's Office deals with every single department that we deal with because that's where people have their problems. So I differ from my colleague, Counselor Pasternak, when he says, well, maybe they shouldn't be doing what 311 does. They don't do 311 calls. They do not do those. If somebody calls the Ombudsman's Office and says, I really want this pothole fixed, it's really bothering me, they don't take them on. They'll say, call 311, call your counselor, call your Toronto Community Housing people, call your social workers. So they do refer people out. They are an office of last resort when people have been treated unfairly by our rules, by our government, by our city councillors, by our staff. People need somewhere to go. So I'm very grateful that we have an Ombudsman's Office. I was a proponent at the beginning, I'm a proponent now, and certainly I do think this office actually needs more resources in the future to make sure we treat all of the people in our city fairly.
Thank you, Counselor DeBermaker. I just, I just want to make a few comments that we don't have, we have approximately 24, 25 councillors, and I've been told that some of the councillors will not be here this afternoon. So I'm just warning members of council that if that's the case, we're going to have to defer the whole agenda to another council meeting. So if we can try to keep it limited on what the speakers say and questions so we can get some of the key items adopted today, or everything will be deferred. I just want to say that because we're going to, we're not going to have quorum. Counselor Ainsley?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your comments. You just inspired me to greatness. I'm going to be short in my comments. I want to thank the Ombudsman's Office for all of their hard work that they do, the Ombudsman and all of her staff. I was kind of surprised by some of the comments and the line of the questioning from the Ombudsman's Office, asking, you know, how they're making the city better and why they're involved in some of the things that they do. If you go to the Ombudsman's website, they don't, there's no discussion of making the city better. And for me, as a city councillor, I expect myself and my staff and 311 to make this city better. If you want fairness, if you have an issue with city staff or you're, you know, and you want fairness, accountability, you want confidentiality, you go to the Ombudsman's Office. And that's what, that's what they're there for. It's not to make the city better. That's our job, that's 311's job. When people have issues and don't think they can get it resolved in a meaningful manner, that's why they go to the Ombudsman's Office and that's why I want to thank them. I've had issues myself, you're trying to help constituents and you get into an endless loop of questions, staff get moved around. I've had staff, all of a sudden, in different agencies, they get moved and another person comes on. And people that, for me, what should be a simple complaint, my residents think it's a simple issue, takes months and months to get dealt with. And when they feel frustrated and have nowhere else to go and they want to do it in a confidential manner, you got to do the Ombudsman's Office. That's what's there for. That's why this council created it amongst all of the integrity officers that we have. So I want to thank them for all of their hard work. I appreciate what they do, you know, the Ombudsman and 12 staff looking after potential complaints from millions of people. And I'm wrapping it up. Thank you very much.
Counsel Dusset?
Thank you very much, Madam, and good morning, everyone. I will be the shortest speech today. Thank you very much to the Ombudsman and her report and all her staff. And the reason I hold these is because I want every councillor to understand what's in this report. I encourage every councillor to read every accountability officer's reports we get and then I might stop holding them. Thank you.
Okay. On the item, on favor, Carrie, thank you, recorded vote. Our next item is EX 33.8.
The item is adopted unanimously, 31 in favor.
Our next item is on page three, EX 33.8. That was a timed item. Do we have any questions?
I have a presentation.
You want a presentation?
Okay, Madam Speaker, I'd like to give a very brief update on the Smart Cities Challenge process. The city is bidding in a competition to win some money from the federal government on the challenge. Before I do that, just quickly, very quickly recognize the team that worked on this and worked very hard. that worked on this and worked very hard, hundreds of hours, were put into this proposal and put into this effort. Mike Williams here beside me, Rob Meekle, Elliot Capel, Chris Berlinger, support from the mayor's office with Siri Agral, and, and literally hundreds of other staff members got involved in this. And I'll talk a little bit about how we engaged with the community as well. The, just to remind you, Madam Speaker, the, the challenge is a 50, there's a $50 million prize available for a large city. This is to get going on a smart city initiative. Smart city, in this case, is really, how do we use data and technology to solve some of our, our more pressing problems? The prize, you know, the, the decision-making process is now underway. We submitted on Tuesday. They will shortlist by end of summer to up to five cities, and we hope to get on that shortlist. And then there'll be another few months to refine the proposal and go for the final $50 million. Just to update you, we, we had a very extensive public consultation process, both in person at, using, leveraging our library branches, and also online. We received 1,200 surveys from residents when asking, "What would they like us to focus on?" And we received approximately 140 project submissions. So these were ideas that came from organizations in the city and residents in the city, and what they'd like us to focus on. The community engagement was quite extensive on this. I won't go through all of them. Everything from the Board of Trade, we had an Indigenous workshop, we had lots of different youth groups and community groups, we talked to post-secondary students, we talked to academic institutions. It was really, I thought, an excellent engagement process with the community, and got lots of really good ideas from all corners of the city. What we've decided to focus on, and what we proposed on, was looking at the situation in our high-rise apartment communities, our high-rise apartment rental communities, and these, and really looking at what's going on in those communities in terms of poverty, and specifically on child poverty. And, and the linkage there is really, you know, what can we do about the caregivers of those, in those families, and the caregivers of those children, from a digital perspective, to try to see if we can raise those families out of poverty and make life better for those children? Okay? So our challenge, and we have to create a challenge statement, which is really the core of what we're saying, our challenge is really to enhance economic opportunities for the families of the 47,000, approximately 47,000 children that live in poverty in those older, high-rise apartment communities in the city of Toronto. And I'll talk a little bit more about, about that problem and why, why that exists. But really, it's, it's kind of two things. There's a physical divide between those tower communities and the rest of the city. So there are challenges in those communities around, how do we access healthy food? How do we access transportation? How do we access and participate in the full opportunities that the city has to offer? And then there's a digital divide, which is, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a second. So just to level set on, on the problem that we're talking about, this is, I think, something, something that you would have seen, Madam Speaker, the, you know, 26% of children are living in low-income households in the city of Toronto. We are unfortunately the highest percentage of any major city in Canada in terms of child poverty. So that's something that, that we should really be working on, and we're already working on in many areas. And we identified the tower communities as, as another area where we could probably, we could focus on from a digital perspective, changing that situation. In, in the tower communities, that number jumps to 43%. So this is a map of where those tower communities are located, and you can see the sort of incidence of where we have some challenges in those communities. In some of the communities, by the way, 43% is the average across all of the tower communities in the city, and there's approximately 1,200 towers in the city of Toronto. In some communities, the child poverty rate is up as high as in the 70s, percentage-wise. So just to talk about what, what that digital divide is, well, I mean, the simple fact is, when you're a low-income family, you have trouble affording good-quality internet access. So, you know, it can cost up to $150, that's the average price for home internet access, as well as just one mobile data account. So, you know, if you're a low-income family, you'd have a very hard time affording that. And what that does over the long term is it results in a digital divide. There, there are, you know, there's a lack of literacy in some of those families, and those families really just don't get to participate in the current economy and in, in, in the sharing economy. That's really dependent on having access and having a high level of literacy with respect to the internet. The, the one thing I did want to mention, you know, we've got, at the same time that there's this divide going on, we've got this opportunity to work with the private sector in, in that they're making massive investments in upgrading their internet infrastructure in the city, in the form of 5G and fibre to the home and so on. So, you know, our idea is really centered around getting very collaborative with the private sector on that infrastructure upgrade, and really using that opportunity to close the digital divide once and for all. So our vision that we've articulated in our proposal is really to, you know, increase access, increase literacy, build a platform using that access, leveraging that access and literacy, and, and really use that platform to understand what's going on in those communities, understand how we can really create local solutions on digital platforms, and really change the, you know, really, you know, get those low-income families participating in the economy in a much more meaningful way. The pillars of the solution, as I say, are, are access, literacy, and, and a platform. That's really the, the core of our proposal, and if we are successful in getting shortlisted, and if we were successful in the $50 million, that's where we would invest our, that's where we would invest. I did want to mention that, you know, why do we talk about a platform? The platform allows us to do analytics, allows us to have a real, robust, open, open data platform and open data that we can work with all of our community partners and work with the private sector, to really identify what's going on in these communities, you know, measure progress, you know, set goals, you know, launch programs, and then measure progress against those goals. So the platform is really critical, and it's really core to the whole Smart Cities strategy, is using data more effectively and using a platform to drive outcomes. So in terms of a future state, so, you know, this is really our value proposition to the federal government, why they should give us the $50 million. So what we envision here is a publicly governed, scalable digital platform. So this is an open data platform that, you know, where public, where public, you know, the public owns the data. You know, this can be nationally deployed. We can start with high-rise communities and then extend it to other communities and inside the city, and of course, other communities in the rest of Canada. We really need to get going on a collaborative model with the private sector to deploy the next generation of internet infrastructure, and use that, use that opportunity to close the digital divide. And then, of course, leverage the city's position, you know, our leading position in Canada as an open data leader, to really use that data to work with all of our community partners to solve these problems. And that concludes the presentation.
Question, councillor Archer Mary.
I missed something. You said, "The pillars of the solution are..." And then you said, "Access to literacy." What was the...
Yes, through, through the chair, the three pillars of the solution are access. So that's really closing the, you know, the affordability gap, and, and really addressing, you know, the, the reality that low-income families face in being able to afford both home internet access and mobile internet access. Number two is literacy. If you've been suffering from access barriers, then you're also then suffering from literacy in terms of how to leverage the internet, and, and then build a platform so that we can match, you know, needs in the community on a very local basis, with service providers and, and, and platforms that would fill those needs.
Thank, thank you. Third.
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Mahavik.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, to this, to this staff. Usually, we kind of are half asleep, but you caught my attention. This is amazing. Are you in contact with our poverty reduction staff?
Through the speaker, yeah. We work very closely with Chris Berlinger and, and a whole bunch of folks in that, in, in the poverty reduction team, and both inside the city, and there's lots of partners that we work with, obviously, outside the city.
And you're weaving this into the 2.0 poverty reduction strategy?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so can, just, just for fun and to entice your imagination, or the imagination of colleague councillors, like, we have 4,000 computers that we recycle every year. Do you think it's a great, a good idea, modest idea, to try to find a way to refurbish them and get them in the hands of people who need them? Along with other people in the mush sector? And is that something you might be interested in working on?
Yeah, through, through the speaker. Interestingly, devices aren't the major, aren't the major barrier. Access is, access is the barrier, and literacy is the barrier. There are lots of programs, actually, that exist in the community, you probably know about some of them, on, on, on providing devices to people who need them. You know, I think access is the core of this issue.
Yes, but you can weave an access program with a, with a hardware program. Can I ask you this? Do you think that we should, as a matter of policy, and if we do a group purchase, it might, it might work, say that in any TCHC building of five, or 10, or more, or something, some benchmark, that we, we provide a global contract for, to make it a hot site? And then tenants, residents in those buildings would be able to access Wi-Fi? In other words, that we almost say that as a right of residency, or an opportunity for all residents should be to access Wi-Fi?
Yeah, through the speaker, I, I believe we'll solve the, the access and, and digital divide through a whole variety of strategies. One of them will be get, get internet into people's hands, get internet into people's homes, and get internet into the places where people go and work, live, and play.
So if they have the Wi-Fi, they have the hardware, then it's about the teaching tool to help them, us, understand how to, how to use it to the maximum capacity. And that then is part of being a Toronto resident. That's, that's kind of the vision that I think you have here.
Yes.
This is excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Mahavik. Next on this, on the two-question staff is councillor Ainslie, at five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. Mr Colm, one of the things, people get very excited about smart cities and what they can do, but we do have discussions around data and privacy, and, and how that's monitored and taken care of. And I was just wondering, in terms of staying ahead of the curve when it comes to a smart city, there's been talk about working with provincial and federal government, and at the municipal level, about having a digital infrastructure plan. And I was wondering...
Councillor Ainslie, if you could, councillor Ainslie, if you could speak into the mic.
Sorry, where are we at creating a digital infrastructures plan for the city of Toronto?
There've been a variety of, through the chair, a variety of conversations about working on that, and there's been work with both the, well, with all the suppliers. And one of the advantages of this two-step process within this competition is it'll afford us a more formalized way of doing, doing those consultations. As Michael has indicated, the physical infrastructure has to be there before any of this can work.
Right, but, so are we, we're gonna have a formal digital infrastructure plan, Mr Williams, in place, as we move forward as a smart city?
That would be an outcome of, of this successful pursuit of this competition, yes.
Okay, but we, we would do that anyway, wouldn't we, with the discussions we're having around Google and Sidewalk Labs?
We would probably do most of this anyway, but this would help us do it faster and in a more structured manner.
Okay. And I was just wondering, Mr Colm, about the, the indices or benchmarks that we're using. I was reading a report the other day about the top, top 20 global cities by performance last year, and they look at mobility, health, safety, and productivity to determine who this, what the top 20 cities are in the world in terms of smart city.
Yeah, through, through the speaker, actually, there, there, we've, you know, we've consulted with a number of indices. There's lots of them out there. We actually rank relatively highly in some of those categories. In some of those categories, we rank on the lower scale. I think, you know, where, where those categories focus is really on infrastructure maturity, and some of our, you know, what tools are we using in terms of managing our infrastructure, managing outcomes in terms of sort of the physical, the physical act, you know, city. You know, where this is focused on is really social and economic outcomes, and how are we integrating that social and economic data more effectively? And I think that's where the indices fall short a little bit, in the current, the current indices that we use, is that there isn't really good measures about how we're using data and technology on the social front.
Okay. And my final question, Mr Deputy Speaker, I just wanted to ask about, so as we're moving forward as a, on a foundation to create a smart city, we have an open data master plan that was just created, but we, we seem to be moving slowly at some things, like Green Pea Parking, homeless shelter data, this council asked for in January. And I'm, I'm trying to understand how we're breaking down the barriers between different divisions to understand what, how we're gonna move forward in a cohesive manner to create a smart city, once we get past this application.
Through the speaker, I might ask our, our acting CIO to answer that.
Through the speaker, I think one of the areas that we are looking at is that, first, we're trying to make the distinction between data that is residing in terms of the difference, in terms of metadata, and where the data is located. So walking through some of the other divisions right now, in terms of working with our partners in sort of shelter and transportation, we are trying to move through consultation process in terms of identifying where those data reside, and what the best way of providing the data in a broad aspect. So as you can imagine, we're custodians of the data, as opposed to specifically where we are using predictive analysis. But we are looking through certain partnerships and the great technologies out there in sort of things like artificial intelligence of how we're actually trying to mine the data. So I think it's a journey, but we are certainly talking to each of the divisions and trying to walk with, where does the data reside? What is the actual use of the data, and how can the data be available for the citizens and residents in trying to support the process of a smart city?
Okay. And so as, as we're looking, we have an open data master plan. Some, some cities, New York City, for example, have, they have an open data bylaw. Would, would you see that as the next stage of, we incorporate a master plan? As we're trying to create a smart city, we move forward to an open data bylaw?
Yeah, through the speaker, I, I think that's one option we should consider. At a very minimum, we need a, we need a governance strategy around our open data. We need to be clear with residents around how we're going to use data and how we're not going to use data. And we need to make, you know, we need to make a social contract with our, with our residents about, you know, about data, and what we're gonna do with this sort of new, new forms and new sources of data that we're talking about here in a smart city.
Thank you councillor Ainslie. And members of council, the microphones aren't picking up all of your questions, so please, when you ask questions or speak, make sure you're just directed towards the microphone, and we'll make sure everyone can hear your questions. Next on our list of questions is councillor Shan.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very exciting. I wanted to ask if this has any, has any conversation with the tower renewal project that was being undertaken by United Way, and City was part of it, to kind of figure out a way, if this funding wasn't successful, there are other mechanisms to do this?
Yes, through the speaker, we're, we're quite closely with our tower renewal partnership and the internal and external partners that we have working on that. They were on our, they were on our working team, went through several reviews of our, our proposal, and got lots of input from those teams. As I say, there's, there's some physical issues with the, with the towers, and then there's some digital issues with the towers. We're already doing a tremendous amount of work on tower renewal and on neighbourhood revitalisation in these communities, and, and we need to just build on that, and coming, coming at it from a digital perspective.
So what, what happens, because this is an exciting project, and it's much needed, what would happen if we were not successful? Is there any other plans simultaneously being developed to, to do at least part of this work in some places?
Yeah, through, through the speaker, we're really excited about this one. We think we should go forward with, with it, whether we get funding or not. We have to do some more work in terms of how that would look and where that would come from.
So in case, if we are fortunately successful, how sustainable is this with that bit of money coming just as a one-time funding? Would this be like something we offer and we'll have to cut off after a few years, or would that be something? Because that is even also some form of injustice if we were able to sustain some of these things, right?
Yes, through the speaker, the one-time funding is really oriented towards getting a project off the ground, building the, the sustainable model, and putting that sustainable model in place. The one-time funding wouldn't, wouldn't solve this problem forever, as you know. So it's really focused on the project, getting those partnerships in place, getting the infrastructure in place, and then, you know, ensuring that it's sustainable for the long term. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor, I just want to remind members of council again that we will be running out of quorum shortly. Councillor Wong-Tam.
Yes, thank you very much, and I too am very excited about this project. I just wanted to ask a question with respect to the, the data collection, since we're on the topic of data. Who, you, you mentioned that you have to put up, put together a plan, that this plan has to engage broader citizens in consultation, that, that the data will be publicly owned. And I'm just curious, when is this plan going to be executed? Like, and what is the time rollout, considering the, the Smart Cities Challenge has a, has a hard timeline, and then the fact that we've got conversations happening around the city with respect to Sidewalk, Toronto, and so forth? Is there, is there an estimated timeline to when you have this digital infrastructure plan?
Yeah, through, through the speaker, I, we don't have a, have a fixed timeline on this. As Mr Williams pointed out, this is a, this particular challenge is a two-stage process. If we are shortlisted and we move forward, we would build that more detailed plan, and how that, it's sort of infrastructure, and how the data governance and, and the data framework would work.
Should, should we not try to have that, the data... Should we not try to have that, the data management and infrastructure plan in place before we think about the hard infrastructure?
Yeah, through the speaker, I think we need to get going on the data plan in advance of executing on this and I think what will be a flow of smart city initiatives coming down the pipe in the future.
The United Nations has declared that Internet access should be a basic right at this point in time. Is there an equity human rights lens that's placed over this particular smart city challenge?
Yes, through the speaker, I believe that is really at the core of what we're proposing here, and that is that Internet access and equal affordable access to the digital universe is necessary to be a full participant in the current economy.
And how will you ensure that somewhere along the way, because it's going to take time to develop the physical infrastructure, time to roll it out, to test it, to scale it up, how will you ensure that it will not become a for-profit driven initiative after public dollars have gone into build the physical infrastructure?
Yeah, through the speaker, I would like to just say on physical infrastructure, the challenge we have here in the city is not necessarily, at current state, is physical, right? All of these buildings are wired, Internet is available. The challenge we have is affordability. So, you know, our view is that there's an opportunity with all of the investments that are being made by the private sector to work with that sector, to make sure those investments happen in the right way, that we can close this digital divide and create some affordability options for people who may not have those options today.
I was under the impression that that's not the case. In some work that I've done with TCHC, where I brought bean field to the table to try to pilot project exactly this, in the 19 TCHC buildings in Ward 27, we got the response that the physical infrastructure, because of the age of the building, the thickness of the walls, that was going to be some of the larger expenses upfront that we were struggling with. But you're telling me that that's not the case, that this is actually already set up? I don't understand.
Yeah, through the speaker, there are some pockets in certain buildings where there are challenges with physical infrastructure?
Oh, okay, so it's not that it's all, it's not like every single building is retrofitted with the routers and with the cable, the fiber optics cable yet?
Through the speaker, that's correct.
Okay, and then finally, my final question, and you'll probably recognize this question because you attended the indigenous workshop, there were some comments from the indigenous community, because of the longtime paternalistic colonial relationship that they've had with government, they're really reluctant to hand over their data. And there may be other populations in the city that will feel the same way. How do we reconcile that? Is there an opt-out option for those who don't want to participate but still be able to obtain the benefit?
Yes, through the speaker, we envision a publicly governed, so governed by the communities that we are looking to work with on this program in terms of how we would use the data, who could opt-in and opt-out, with lots of details to sort out in how we would execute on this program, but we really envision this to be a public sort of community governed data model.
Thank you. I'll look forward to those details.
Councillor Desette.
Thank you very much. I love the presentation. I think it's brilliant. I'm on the library board, and as you know, over the last few years, we've been trying to get those hotspots into people's hands, into their homes. Will any of this funding, when we get it, not if, but when we get it, be going to something like the library to help them add more hotspots to people's homes?
Through the speaker, we've partnered very closely with the library. Our city librarian has been on, really on the core team, working with us on this. We really see that as the launching point for our digital divide efforts. And it's, as I say, or, excuse me, as I said earlier, it'll be a combination of strategies from, you know, hotspot lending, getting into people's homes, getting devices into people's hands, getting high-speed, good quality into facilities that, where those do not exist today, where people are. So we, our proposal really outlines a collaborative strategy with the public library. We have a, you know, exceptional capabilities and experience in there, probably maybe the best in the world in terms of digital divide, so we're going to work with them.
I agree with you 100% that it's the best in the world. Just continuing on, one of the councillors, councillor Mahavik, asked about devices. The Toronto Public Library also lends out devices. If we find that that is another avenue to get people access, would this, again, could some of this money go to buying more devices so people can borrow them, not necessarily having to buy them?
Through the speaker, it could. I, you know, my focus on this one would be, let's get the private sector to step up. We have lots of interdependency in terms of access to our infrastructure, and there are problems we want to solve as a city. So let's try to work with the private sector to close those gaps and not, you know, use this seed funding really to set up the sustainable delivery model long-term.
Great, thank you. I'm really excited about this. Thank you very much.
Councillor Troyce.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In my former life as a ED of the Cabbage Town Youth Centre, I focused a lot on Internet safety training. Is there any thoughts towards Internet safety training once we equip people with the technology?
Through the speaker, yes. The second pillar I mentioned was literacy and safety and security and using services, Internet services responsibly would need to be a component of that.
Okay, and would that include seniors as well as youth and children?
Through the speaker, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll be very brief, and you may have said this already, so my apologies. What's the price tag? What's the cost of undertaking this?
Through the speaker, the award is $50 million. We've scoped out the first tranche of that. If we get shortlisted, we would be awarded $250,000 to conduct a short sort of scoping and more detailed planning exercise. I wouldn't be able to speak about total cost at this time. We'd need to go through that more detailed scoping and planning.
Okay, so that work hasn't been done?
Through the speaker, yes.
Okay, and then just what about, I guess, a little bit about safety and exposure to children? Has that been considered, health and safety aspects of this?
Yeah, through the speaker, it's an important aspect of this. And again, through literacy and how we protect vulnerable residents in a program like this, it's going to need to be a core component of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ainsley to speak.
Oh, sorry, I thought, I was, okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a motion that I'd like to move that city council requests the city manager to incorporate a digital infrastructure plan within the smart city work. And I'm moving this forward because this is a common foundation in any city around the world when it comes to smart city. When we had the discussion around Sidewalk Labs and what they're going to be doing on our waterfront, it's an amazing proposal, what they're going to be doing down there. But there are a lot of concerns about the privacy of data and confidentiality and, you know, if, and how would the city's going to work with this? The city should be in the lead of this and not, and not following behind the companies that we're trying to do partnerships with. And I'll point out in the Sidewalk Labs area that they're looking at doing, they've got a very, they have a plan with a full suite of proprietary hardware and software products and services owned by their parent company Alphabet. But you're also going to see Waymo, which looks after autonomous vehicles, Flow, which looks after transportation planning, Waze, which looks after traffic data, City Block looks after social service delivery, and Nest, which already looks after thermosats, outdoor security cameras, and it's a long list. I think we need to understand the data that's being used, where it's being reserved, how it's being safeguarded, and we need to have that digital infrastructure plan. I think a smart city overall, there's a lot of potential here. There's been numerous reports that I've read that smart cities, they do predictive data, predictive analysis of what's going to be taking place. There's cities around the world, it's proven, smart cities will save residents three hours, a total hours of three work weeks a year. If you can tell your residents you can use smart data for better transportation, improve healthcare, education, and overall can save them three weeks a year, I think they would be pretty impressed with that. I'm going to be supporting this project. We have, we're looking at getting money from the federal government, which is always nice, but I think as we're moving forward into the 21st century, there's a huge opportunity here. I think this is just the first step, but we need to lay the groundwork and make, ensure that we have a digital infrastructure plan in place as we move this forward.
Councillor Campbell, did you take your name off? Councillor Matlow?
I simply want to recognize councillor Ainsley. There were a number of expressions of gratitude to staff who merit that gratitude, but councillor Ainsley, I think should be pointed out for the leadership role that he's provided with respect to smart city strategies, with the import of providing open data, and really, you know, being an inspiring voice on our council for those of us who believe in that cause, and I believe we all do. And I just want to acknowledge his leadership and his hard work. Thank you.
Councillor Carmichael-Grepp.
Thank you. I just wanted to shortly say, I wanted to thank Michael for all his hard work on this initiative, and I know he's working on many, many other files, and this is just one small portion of the work that he is doing and that his team is doing. So I just wanted to say thank you to Michael, and hopefully we will have a good result come out of this and come out on top with this competition. So thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to call the vote? Oh, councillor Mahavik. Councillor Mahavik, your name is up there?
Thank you. I just wanted to add my thanks to staff. This is...
Councillor Mahavik.
Madam Speaker, I find that a little offensive, Gord. Madam Speaker, I find that offensive as well. That's totally inappropriate.
Councillor Mahavik.
I think that...
Councillor Mahavik, go ahead.
I'm going to take my time. This work really coheres and is consistent with the work that we're doing on the anti-poverty strategy. I think a modern, up-to-date city cannot have a digital divide as well as an income divide, a housing divide, bridging this gap. In the sessions that we have had around poverty reduction, this is one of the themes that has emerged. And so I want to applaud staff and thank them for the good work that they're doing. And I think that the next, or at least one of the next times that you'll see this pop up is in the new strategy that comes forward in the first quarter of 2019 as to how we're going to deal with the digital divide in this, in the next phase of the poverty reduction strategy. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion. Recorded vote.
Councillor Wong-Tam, you're seated.
Councillor Mahavik, please. Councillor Pragadakis, please. The motion carries 30 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is amended on favor carried. Our next item is page 3, CD 27.3, which, and the mayor has circulated at advance, motion on that. So do we have questions on this item? Okay, councillor Pasternak, you're the one that wanted to deal with this. So do we have any questions? Councillor Karjannis.
Madam Chair, I do not have questions of the staff, but I have just clarification when the mayor presents his motion. Do you want me to do it now or when he presents it?
Well, when the motion is presented.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Shan, you have questions? Councillor Shan, you took your name off, okay? To speak. Mayor, Mayor Tory, to speak.
Well, Madam Speaker, I, this is really, I would describe the memorandum of understanding as ordinary course of business, and I've had some dealings in the motion, by the way, that I've moved has been advanced circulated, so hopefully that can be put up for you to see. And as I indicated yesterday, just in trying to clarify what it was within the context of our deliberations today, it is simply an encapsulation of the items that we identified in our news conference held together with several members of council yesterday, including councillor Karjannis and councillor Pasternak, to indicate to the governments, the provincial and federal governments, some things that they should and hopefully will do on an urgent basis to help with a particularly acute problem we have at the moment with respect to providing proper, proper housing for refugees and proper shelter for them when they arrive in Toronto. I should tell you that one of the items has already been acted upon by the province, so I think that the news conference is having the desired effect, which was to show our support for our continuing posture and policy and approach as a city, to be a welcoming city, but at the same time to indicate we can't do everything alone that needs to be done when you get to the point where approximating 40% of our entire shelter capacity is being occupied by refugees. And that's not a complaint, it is simply a statement that this is not the place where we should be best welcoming people to our city, and it is having the effect of putting a great strain on a system that's really not meant for that purpose. And so I think all the things set out in the motion, but also in the news conference yesterday, are things that would help with that, in particular, the identification of additional facilities, which the other governments are at work on now, where we could better house what often amount to families, more so than, say, single individuals. It's families, and of course, that puts a particular emphasis on the kind of accommodation that we could hopefully find for them, which is not best found within the shelter system. So that is what the motion is about, and it also clarifies, I think, something that councillor Karjannis is concerned with, namely, to work with the other governments to make sure that, for example, they could issue work permits faster and sooner in the process, because we all know part of the problem that's also alluded to in this motion is that the processing time to have someone's refugee status determined is longer than it might be, and we've asked that be accelerated, both from the moment that they officially become part of the refugee determination process and then the time it takes after that to actually reach the determination. So we've asked that all of that be speeded up, but in the meantime, ask that people be given an opportunity to have a work permit almost immediately, because these are people who, like most people, want to work, are happy to work, would work with a view to supporting their own families and finding housing other than a shelter if they just had the opportunity to work. So these are among the things that are included in this list, and that's why it's there, just to really embody it as part of the resolution approving this agreement that's really more a matter of ongoing business between ourselves and the Ontario government in this case, and just to add this message, I guess, to sort of have an opportunity to send councils' support for the stuff we asked about yesterday.
Thank you. Councillor Shan, you held the item down to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Couple of things. One, I just wasn't completely sure if the city had had an equal opportunity to shape this MOU or will be given equal opportunity or equitable opportunity to do this, because I find this a little bit top-down, and I may be wrong. Toronto, even though we don't directly invest a lot of money into immigration and settlement, we take a whole lot of active role in making sure immigrants, newcomers, and refugees feel at home, are supported through our various programs, and it's an important role that we play. But also, at the same time, the city of Toronto has benefited enormously from people coming to the city, newcomers, refugees, and immigrants from all different parts of the world. So I need this to be a little bit more respectful in terms of the work we do, including when we talk about refugees taking up space in shelter. Sometimes that overemphasis of it itself can feed to xenophobia around what people feel about people coming to this place and building a stronger place. It is very important that that conversation happens in a respectful manner, because we have seen that that is, that is something that has been feeding a lot of negativity in the past, not just now it's shelter, but before it used to be employment. People used to say people are coming here and taking away local employment, which is, on the contrary, many, many newcomers and immigrants have been creating because of their arrival and their settlement in places like Toronto, have been creating more jobs. So I think that is, that is an important consideration to have. Having said that, what my main concern is that city of Toronto will have to be more forceful as a government in terms of injecting our positions, in terms of finances, in terms of philosophy, in terms of direction and vision into this MOU. in terms of direction and vision into this MOU. And I hope that will be considered by staff. We're planning to see if there were some amendment that could be moved to make that the case. But I'll leave it to the current structure and the staff to make sure that that be the case, that the analysis and the kind of vision and the kind of framework that Toronto brings to immigration, settlement, and refugee rights is much more nuanced and much more comprehensive than what the province and the federal government have. So I wish we can continue to push that in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I too want to speak to this item because I was here at the time we had our first annex agreement under the Canada-Ontario, the COIA agreement, immigration agreement. And at that time, we spelled out very clearly that we wanted a stronger role. And in fact, we wanted a tripartite agreement, which we didn't succeed in. But we were successful in having this annex to the agreement. And what we asked for was to have a real voice and to be at the table with those levels of government to discuss the variety of issues that affect our city, affect the largest city in the country. We wanted to talk about access to employment, education and training, access to services, and about immigration levels. So it really was about how does a city like Toronto plan and plan effectively to respond to the decisions about immigration that are being made by the federal and provincial governments. And I think the motion by the mayor, which speaks to them loudly and clearly about the issue of the rise in refugee claimants, is a good example of how we've been ignored to date. And we are facing a crisis now because we do not have an official voice or an official place at the table to discuss these issues. And I hope, because we don't have before us what the proposal, proposed terms and conditions of that agreement are, I hope that the message we can send to staff today is that we want it to be a meaningful and effective agreement that actually does give us a role in expressing and seeking the supports necessary to be a welcoming city and to be the city that does welcome the most newcomers in this country. So I know last time, we engaged in research, we engaged in subcommittees, and had discussions of various kinds. But it was never clear to me that the role we played there had an influence overall in the decisions that the federal and Ontario governments made. So if we can, in this agreement, strengthen it, have the city have a role in decision-making, that's what we need. We don't need to be sitting on tables where we share our experience or share our ideas. But we need something where our voice is heard and acted upon. I don't know. That is the challenge of Canadian federalism, when we have three levels of government that have a role. We don't officially have a role in settlement or in immigration. But as my colleague said earlier, Counselor Shan pointed out, we do have, it has an impact on us as a city. So I was going to move that we have a report back before the terms are finalized. But I will not move that today. And I'm not sure how urgent this is. And we haven't really had a chance to ask questions today. So I will simply urge that we take this seriously and make sure that there are provisions that will give Toronto an effective voice and an ability to be a true partner with the other levels of government in accepting and welcoming and serving the newcomers of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kergianis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank the mayor for his leadership on this one. And certainly something that we, as a city, have come to great concern. And we have moved forward and stepped up. Unfortunately, I have to say that our counterparts, both in the federal and provincial government, have ignored us for a number of years. And certainly, I want to thank the mayor for putting in there on the first page of the thing, under item G, that work permits are issued to individuals that come to this country. This morning, there was, Madam Speaker, there was an article in the Toronto Star that portrayed a refugee that has been here from Syria for over a year. And this fellow has been trying to settle his life and move forward. It takes anywhere between a year or two, three, and sometimes four years before a refugee hearing has been done. And at that, in that time, people are hanging on with, for bare life, and they cannot work. A lot of them are working illegally. So this move to include, to ensure that work permits are issued certainly will give people an opportunity to get on with their lives, give them a hand up versus a hand out, and for them to be proud of their work that they're doing and to move forward. The other one that I also want to point out is number three. The city manager review staffing needed to adequately handle refugee flows in Toronto. When we had the Syrian crisis, we had one staffer that was looking into it. And after that was over, we certainly did not continue that work. Now we're finding that we need to have staff that will be there in order to answer, in order to be able to respond, and able to make sure that we, if we faced another crisis, will be ready to move. And I want to thank the, you know, the mayor for putting this in here. I know that the newcomer's office is overstretched. They barely have enough resources to continue with their work right now. And I think, Madam Speaker, that they need the extra person. And I encourage the city manager to make adequate resources to them in order for us not to be able to respond just today, but in the future. After the Syrian refugee, we didn't have the staff. Now we're again meeting this challenge. So we need to make sure that all the way, answer all the other requests, like the indigenous, the ethnic diversity, this is a must. This is where we step up and make sure that we, as a city, respond in the future what is happening. This is not one-off. This is not a two-off. This is the way that we will have to make sure that we, as a city, respond. Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you, you were very eloquent and very cautious in your words yesterday. I would have taken the gloves off. Because we are looked upon as the lowest level. And I do remember you saying the words that you felt like a boy in shorts running up to Queen's Park. Well, it's about time that we, the largest city in Canada, the economic engine that drives Canada, and that we pay the most. There was one time that we paid something like sixty-six percent on the dollar that flows out on taxation from the city of Toronto goes to other places. And we only get back thirty-four of what we pay in. It's about time that we stand up and ask for what we're worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak to speak.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion. If we could put it on the screen. It is a minor amendment, just so that council is kept up to date. No, no. Gosh. No, that's been removed. Just the latest amendment to what was moved in committee. Just a report back request. There we go. Okay, so when this came to committee, I think I speak for a few of my committee members, we were somewhat taken aback by this document. Particularly on page three, the memorandum of understanding highlights four areas of mutual interest, of which housing is not included, and that's on page three. We also go to page five, and the memorandum of understanding is similar in content to the 2007 memorandum of understanding with minor revisions. Well, the world, the world has totally changed since 2007, I can assure you. And then it goes on to say, we will not discuss funding issues and issues associated with preclaimed refugees. Well, I've got to tell you, there's a saying south of the border that says, when someone says it's not about the money, you know it's about, you know it's about the money. Housing, financing, sharing costs, all crucial. We heard yesterday that we are spending an additional sixty-four point five million dollars in direct costs related to providing shelter and housing to refugee claimants. And Toronto is a welcoming city. We want newcomers to come here. We want people from all over the world to settle here and enjoy a fresh start and new lives. But at the same time, any grade ten reading of the Constitution or Supreme Court decisions will clearly say that immigration is federal responsibility. We've got to get, we've got to get the federal government to come to the table. I was a little concerned that we were giving authority to our city staff. And I have nothing against the talents of our city staff in such a short period of time, something that's got to be done ideally before a so-called blackout period of the upcoming provincial election. And this really should have come to us months ago so that we could formulate a proper response from council. But that being said, I would agree with many of the comments made by Counselor Kergianis about the mayor's motion. This will be attached as we go forward. These are many of the key issues that we face here in the city. And remember, we want to bring newcomers here, we want to bring immigrants here, not to fail, but to succeed. At the same time, the City of Toronto cannot keep propping up through various levels of responsibility, both the provincial and the federal government. We must get them to come to the table. And this provides the infrastructure to do it. Now, if they don't want to talk about housing, well, we're going to talk about housing. If they don't want to talk about funding, well, that's too bad. We're going to talk about funding. And I believe the motions before you achieve that goal. And I think it's very important that we make it clear that we're prepared to do our fair share, but that we want the other levels of government to do it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Matlow to speak.
Yeah, I heard earlier the word disrespectful to some of the work that's been done on this item. And I just, it provoked me to want to add my voice to saying that this is actually an incredibly respectful list of requests. We can't do it alone. And we can't pretend that we can do it alone. As Counselor Pasternak said, accepting refugees is not only our responsibility, but it's our federal government's primary responsibility. And we have a supportive role to play, a supporting role to play. But we can't pretend that accepting and housing and providing shelter, in many cases, to refugees can or should be the sole responsibility of the property taxpayers of the City of Toronto. That being said, though, we do shoulder the burden to be an active partner and a participant in supporting these people, who we want to be, active and contributing members of our society. So reading through each one of these items, it reflects our need for financial support to be able to adequately provide that support. It does address the word housing in there. It's not just shelter, it's housing. And I think it's a thoughtful list of recommendations, obviously worked on by staff, but provided with leadership by Mayor Torrey on going out to our partners and saying, not that we want to fight with you, it's quite the opposite, that we want government to work the way that we want government to work and the way I believe citizens want governments to work, which is to not do this, the blame game, but to say, everyone has a role and a responsibility. And we need to play each of our roles and responsibilities to be able to provide the service that we have to provide. And what happened in the past year is that the City of Toronto, actually, I think, stepped up to the plate as much as it did with the limited resources and ability it has. And that wasn't enough. And I think the mayor and everyone has accepted that that was inadequate. So rather than just pretending that we can keep going the way we are going, there's a list of recommendations on working with our partners to try to achieve our collective goal. So kudos to the mayor and to city staff and to the city manager for this excellent piece of work.
Thank you. Counselor Ainsley to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Speaker, I'll be supporting this motion. I'll be very brief. You know, we need the federal government and the provincial government to do their part. We budgeted annually, we budget sixty-four million dollars to look after our homeless and our shelters, to make sure they're adequately provided for. Everybody's well aware of the huge issues that we had over this past winter trying to keep people from sleeping and dying on our streets. The largest city of Canada, that's not something that we should be allowed to take place. There was an article just in the Toronto Star today. One of the refugees said, we come here to try to save our lives, but as a refugee, my hope is almost gone. The current numbers in our shelter system, the occupancy is thirty-eight percent of the people currently using our shelters are classified as refugees. They're coming here from all over the world. We need to do something. We need the federal government to step up. You know, if we look at numbers as well, our city system has sixty-five hundred beds, six thousand five hundred and forty beds that we have throughout our shelter system and our respite system. Quebec just closed off their refugee system. They're not accepting any more refugees into the province of Quebec. When we talk about the money we spend and the sixty-five hundred beds that we have available here in the province of Quebec, I think it's Montreal, they have eighteen hundred beds. We need every province in this country to do its part, to play its role. We need refugees, we want refugees here. We want to make Canada a better place. We want them to have better lives. We've done it before. We need to continue doing it. And I want to thank Mayor Torrey for putting this motion forward.
Thank you. Okay, so if we can put the motions on the screen. Okay, motion number one by the mayor. Recorded vote.
Counselor Perutzia, please. Counselor Perutzia, please.
The motion carries unanimously thirty-six in favor.
Okay. Counselor Fragadakis.
Yes, sorry, Madam Speaker, I was just wondering, where in the agenda are we? Are we going in some kind of order from page three on, or?
No. Well, we're following the agenda, Counselor Fragadakis.
No, I know. Now that we've done the timed items.
Okay, but we still haven't voted on this.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought we were finished.
No. There's no point.
Sorry.
Okay. Counselor Pasternak's amendment.
Oh, he has more. Okay.
On favor, carried. You want a recorded vote? Recorded vote.
Counselor Perutzia, Counselor McMahon, and Counselor Wong Tam, please.
The motion carries unanimously thirty-five in favor.
Item as amended. On favor, carried. Okay, so where we are, on page three, the top of page three, we're going to start with the deferred items, EY twenty-three seventy-three, EY twenty-five forty, and EY twenty-eight point three by, for Counselor DiGiorgio. And then the etobaco, the etobaco on page four, EY twenty-nine fifty-four. Counselor DiGiorgio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In some respects, today is a happy day.
You have to move your motions.
I have four motions.
Okay, just a sec.
Let me begin with releasing EY twenty-nine point five four and EY twenty-five point four zero.
I'm sorry, hold on. You're releasing on page four, EY twenty-nine fifty-four. Is that it?
Twenty-nine fifty-four, yes.
Okay, so let's just, let's just vote on that? Please, Counselor Fragadakis, Counselor Fletcher, please.
And adopt the recommendation.
Okay, just a sec. So you're releasing that. On favor, carried. Recorded vote.
On the advice of staff.
Okay.
The item is adopted unanimously, 36 in favor.
Okay, councillor De Giorgio.
And on page three, Madam Chair, I'm releasing EY 25.40. I'm adopting the recommendations.
Okay, so on page three, EY 25.40, councillor De Giorgio's releasing.
Councillor Proust, please.
Councillor Fletcher, please.
The item is adopted unanimously, 36 in favor.
Councillor De Giorgio.
Next, Madam Speaker, on page three, I am receiving, or EY 23.73. It's without recommendation, so I make motion to receive.
So, you're moving receipt on page three, EY 2373?
Correct.
On favor, carried. You want to record a vote?
Did he? Is that all right?
Okay, this is just to move receipt on EY 2373.
Councillor Proust, please. Councillor McMahon, councillor Wong-Tam, councillor Leighton, please.
Councillor Pelion, please.
Councillor Pasternak, thank you. Councillor Lee, please.
The motion to receive carries 35 to 1.
Councillor De Giorgio.
On, on page three, Madam Speaker, I have two amendments to EY 28.3. And there is, it is really my attempt to ask the board to consider a pre-hearing prior to actually conducting a hearing, simply because I think there, there needs to be an effort to try and settle some of the competing interests. For example, I'm, I'm basically responsible, my job is to represent the residents that surround that community or surround a particular development. I actually represent the new residents that move into the building, and I actually represent the applicant. And those are competing interests. And I'm hoping to arrive at a solution to some of the inherent problems that basically erupted right from the first, the get-go, right from the first application, right from the first zoning bylaw that came before council. And I'm not going to go into all of the complexities that have, that have involved five years of, of haggling. I do, however, invite you to read a submission today that I received from, it's 28.32, from a lady by the name of Eileen Denny. And she is someone that has made frequent deputations before Planning and Growth Committee over the last number of years that I've been around. I haven't been on the Planning Committee in the last couple of years, but I know she makes constant deputations. She also has appealed the new zoning bylaw in its entirety. And, and I've been at the board, on board hearings with respect to the new zoning bylaw, and I know she's been there. So, I'm not sure exactly where her appeal stands, but I do know that my community has also appealed the new zoning bylaw, and we're waiting to get a hearing there. So, essentially, what I'm trying to do is ask for a mediation hearing so that we can try and put a bunch of things to rest. So, that's the first amendment. The second amendment speaks to one of the major problems on the site, which is parking. There is a severe shortage of parking on the site. Why there's a severe shortage, I can't get into the complications, but what I'm asking for is that we explore two things. We explore, the city owns property right next door to this development. We explore the possibility of the city providing parking that is needed for this particular development on their own property. I'm also asking that we explore, the developer acquire the property and have the developer provide the deficiency in parking. And lastly, I'm asking that the developer provide a minimum, just one single parking space for visitors to the building during the day. Because right now, as it stands, under the zoning bylaw, people visiting the building, visiting their mother during the day, seven days a week, cannot park on-site. They must park on the surrounding streets. And by the way, just to capsulize things, that's a Section 37 benefit presumably for my community, i.e. overflow parking onto the side streets is a Section 37 benefit in the interpretation of the board. And of course, that makes no sense whatsoever. So, those issues need to be ironed out. So, let me finish off by saying, you can capsulize, encapsulize in one or two sentences what Eileen Denny has submitted. She basically saying, in one or two sentences, that in a democratic system, the rights of individuals can be distorted, but they cannot be denied. That's the essence of her submission. Thank you.
Okay, being that we haven't seen these amendments, and this is a very serious issue, we have some legal issues, councillor Desette, you have a question to the solicitor.
I do, through you, Madam Speaker. This property has been...
If we can have the solicitor here, please? Can we have the solicitor? Well, we...
I, I, well, through the speaker, yeah.
It's at the OMB, it has to be dealt with. Okay, to the solicitor. Councillor Desette has a question to you. Oh, okay, can we get answers from the solicitor, then I'll pass you on to the mover? Okay. Councillor Desette?
So, through you, Madam Speaker. This property has been on the Etobaco Community Council agenda, has been on this council agenda several times. Could you please explain to us where we are at right now with this property? I understand it's, it's built and there's people living in it. So, the motions which the local councillor is trying to do, how, how does this work? What can we do to help the councillor, but also how can we help these residents?
Okay, because there's, there's, there's a legal issue here, councillor Davis, we need to get the, the legal opinion on this. I, we did not see these amendments. I'm sorry, councillor Davis. Can I have the, our city solicitor? Yes, councillor Davis.
It may be that is the will of council to vary the order and to ask for, you know, staff questions, but in the past, we've never done that. But it isn't up to the chair to unilaterally declare when we can just go to questions of staff again.
Okay, councillor Davis, can I have a motion by a member that we bury the proceedings and have the city solicitor comment on these amendments? On favor, carried. Thank you. Okay, if I can have the solicitor comment, please? Please.
I have not had an opportunity to review the motions in detail or to discuss them with the chief planner, so I'm not prepared to comment on them at this moment. But what I, what I do want to emphasize is that the registration of the condominium is being delayed and will be further delayed if council does not adopt recommendations at this meeting. I would recommend that council adopt the staff recommendations and that, you are correct. Madam Speaker, it is true that individuals are living in this condo unit now. And without registration, they're paying rent rather than paying down their mortgages. There is a, there is a hearing date set, and settlement discussions could commence.
Thank you.
So, Madam Speaker, if the solicitor hasn't had a chance to see this, should we, should we hold it and let her have a chance to review it and then get an opinion on it? I'm not sure. I'm, I'm in your hands.
Okay, so there's a wish to hold the item down and review the amendments? And I'll go to councillor, yeah, we'll hold the item. Councillor Aldridge, Mary, you have a question to councillor De Giorgio?
I have two questions. One is, what land do we own?
There is a, there's a sliver of property to the west, you know the area well, councillor Nendzian, councillor Aldridge Mary, I'm sorry. It's between Mr. Kuki's property and the subject property. There is a sliver of land that's supposed to have trees planted on it in accordance with the OMB decision. It now just has a bit of grass on it, it's a city-owned property. Trees have not been planted on that property yet.
How big is it?
The property is about 263 square meters. It's roughly about 24 feet by around 120. Piece of passive landscaping parkland theoretically.
Okay, and the other question I had was... B, 1B, B. Explore options for additional reserved residential visitor parking.
So, you have the copies of the motions, Aldridge Mary? Because I don't. Nobody has a copy of the motion.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Oh, it hasn't been distributed yet. What am I, what am I moving my motions for if they haven't been distributed?
Councillor De Giorgio, councillor Aldridge Mary has a question for you.
Well, yeah. Well, then, let's stand the issue down. I'm just saying, you know what? I would like people to have the motion before them.
Okay, councillor Aldridge Mary, can you continue with your question?
What does it mean, reserved residential visitor parking?
You're looking at 1B?
1B, B.
Right. What it means is that the owner of the property is supposed to provide a certain number of parking spaces for visitors only. The zoning bylaw, that was never really before council, gives some relief to that. And what I'm saying is, I'm asking the declarant, the person that wants to register the condominium, please provide at least one, and then let's explore providing more than, up to 16. But I know you have to provide 26 or 27. So, if push comes to shove, the question becomes, does he have to provide the full 26 or 25 or whatever?
Yes, but I mean, the words, reserved residential visitor, is that in order to distinguish it from whatever commercial enterprise will go on-site?
I appreciate your question now. You see, right now, the way it stands is visitors to the residential building can only visit after 7:00 PM at night. And I want visitor spaces reserved, basically, some reserved during the day as well.
Okay, thank...
And we can achieve that because I can make amendments under Section 5124 and Section 5125 of the Planning Act. But I, I'm preferring not to make those kind of amendments and to say, look, let's just look at possibly mediating situation.
Okay, thank you. We're going to hold the item down, and we'll circulate those amendments. Thank you, councillor Aldridge Mary. So, our next item is on page three, EX 33.6. Councillor Guerianis, you held the item down, emergency management program?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I've got a couple of questions of staff, but in view of time and what we have, I was wondering if we can refer this to the next meeting, or...
You want to, you want to...
I've got a lot of questions.
You have a lot of questions?
Can I make a motion to defer?
Yeah, you have five minutes to ask questions. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was wondering, is the appropriate staff...
Yes.
My, my question is that every time that there's an emergency, we activate what it's called council or emergency, and there's a number and an email address that we send information to. Would I be correct?
That is, through the speaker, that is correct.
In the last few instances, can you please advise if this was a 24-hour shift, or was it a, like, 7:30 to 9:30, the emergency?
So, through the speaker, operationally, when we look at councillor coordination type of role, as we do with all them, we go by the current situation and dictate the service that we provide based on the situation that is at hand.
So, the two last emergency sessions that you provided, this was the snow, as well as the, what happened, the tragic event on last week.
Okay, councillor Guerianis, what we have before us is not pertaining to the recent storm that we have. This is the emergency plan update for 2017. If you have any questions specifically on the recent storm, that would be at an appropriate time. But that, all we have before us is the emergency plan for 2017. Do you have any questions on what we have before us?
As we move forward to 2018 and 2019, and I appreciate the report that we have, shouldn't we also be looking at what we've did and how we moved it forward?
Well, maybe then it would be appropriate for you to go to committee or, you know...
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker.
But at this time, that's not before us.
I will...
So, councillor Guerianis, you just released the item? Okay. On page three, EX 33.6, councillor Guerianis is releasing. On favor, carried. On page three, licensing standards, ALS 24.2, body rubs. Councillor Guerianis, do you have questions? Anybody have any questions?
I don't have questions of staff, Madam Speaker.
You don't? Okay. Okay, if you can put your name up on the screen, please, if you have questions. I don't see any names. Councillor De Bearmaker? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to our licensing staff. The report before us has a set of recommendations from the committee and from staff. Do you support those recommendations? And is it your advice to this council that we proceed with those recommendations?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, we support the recommendations, as is before council.
And in the report, there are five, I think we call them associations, that were highlighted. Some of them have, the top one has 725 charges against, I guess, members of this one group. The other one has 500 charges against members of another group, 385 charges against members of another group. If you looked at some of the other groups that issue these licenses and certification, what would some of the other groups, how many charges against their members might there be? Could you give me a couple of examples?
So, through you, Madam Speaker. Currently, 37 professional holistic associations have been approved by council for the purposes of us accepting applications for holistic practitioners and holistic owner licenses. The top five, and the five that are listed in this report, are those that represent approximately 98% of all bylaw charges that have been laid against holistic practitioners and centers. That also coincides with the, with five of the professional holistic associations identified in the Auditor General's review. The, of the other 32 professional holistic associations, there's a significantly less number of charges that have been laid, many of which as well have zero charges that have ever been laid. The Canadian Reiki Association, Reflexology, and others, that are professional holistic associations regulating professional holistic providers, and they would have zero charges.
So, some associations have zero charges, or their members perhaps have zero charges or five charges, but there are a very small group that have hundreds and hundreds of charges against them.
So, through you, Madam Speaker, yes, sir. The five professional holistic associations that we have named in this report represent 98% of the charges that we have laid, and it also represents approximately 80% of the holistic practitioners that hold licenses. The, the lowest number of charges on these five is 255. We then see a significant distance between that number and other PHAs where there are only 25 or 17 charges for various offenses.
And through, Madam Speaker, there, there was a deputant from the Canadian Centre... And through Madam Speaker, there was a deputant from the Canadian Centre to End Human Trafficking who came and spoke to us. If my memory is correct, the people who are actually advocating to end human trafficking did support your report, correct?
So through you, Madam Speaker, my apologies, sir. I missed our committee meeting. I can tell you that we are meeting, have met with members, advocates, and other people who are very concerned about the issue of human trafficking writ large in the city, including the issue of human trafficking occurring in these types of premises and others. There are various opinions from various groups. I don't think it would be responsible for me to acknowledge what one particular group said, but I do know that this is an extremely complex and a very sensitive issue, and there are many stakeholders that we need to consult with in determining what the appropriate forward course is.
And through you, Madam Speaker, at that meeting, and I'm a member of the licensing committee, and at that meeting, there were some deputants who came forward and accused, I'll say, made accusations against our bylaw enforcement officers of inappropriate behavior and actual racism. I don't know if you've heard about those accusations, and have you heard about those accusations six months ago or a year ago? Or can you tell me about those accusations of specifically racism and inappropriate behavior based on the information you have?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I am aware that there were a number of individuals who have indicated concerns around the conduct of my officers. As I mentioned, it's an extremely complex and sensitive issue, and the nature of the investigations are equally so. I can assure you that my expectation is that my staff conduct themselves in a professional manner at all times. It is also our responsibility as management to ensure that they're properly trained and properly resourced to do that work. I am clear that we are reviewing our operational procedures as we move forward. Certainly, I am not aware of any specific concerns or allegations in respect to specific locations or officers. However, it is incumbent upon us to take the concerns raised, review the manner in which we've been approaching the work, and deal with any issues, if there are any issues that arise.
And great, through you, Madam Speaker. And if any councillor today suggested that we refer this item back and stop what you're doing, would you say that would be a very unwise decision by council or a decision that you would not support or recommend?
That was your last question.
So, certainly through you, Madam Speaker, our recommendation and the purpose of this report was to lay out a work plan of a body of work that is desperately needed to be done in reviewing the manner in which we regulate these industries. So that is why we made the recommendation or presented the report with the work plan, made the recommendation, founded on the findings of the Auditor Generals and supported by the Auditor General's findings on these professional holistic associations while we undertake the work that we do. It is an important issue. We do need to consult with numerous stakeholders in this regard, and that is what we would like to go forward and do.
Thank you. Counselor Aldridge Mary, questions?
I understand that there are legal ramifications to the actual naming or indicating the location of where some problem, commercial enterprises of this sort are.
So through you, Madam Speaker, I would defer to the fact that any charges that are laid and are proceeding through the courts becomes a matter of public record. It gets, it's concerning when we identify something as problematic. We'd rather point to the fact of whether a conviction has been registered for a particular offense and when that is a public record. But you're correct that it is not productive for us to start labeling or identifying specific locations in the absence of evidence and specificity.
So, the first part of what you're saying is that if we do have evidence, and we do, for example, with an establishment in my ward, located in my ward, and the second part of what you're saying is that it would not be fruitful, in fact, it could be damaging to us in court if we actually name the establishment.
Mm-hmm.
So which one is it? Both?
It can be both. So certainly, it depends on the context. It's important for us that we undertake investigations, produce evidence, and hear the matter through the courts. So my reference about a location being identified is in the context of when it is a part of the public record where charges have been laid and matters are being adjudicated. In that realm, places and people are identified. Absent that, we do not, and it's not responsible for us, and it can be problematic to us from a judicial standpoint if we start talking about premises that have not been convicted or outside of that judicial regime.
This is an important question for communities to understand. What law has to change? Is it a provincial law that has to change in order for us to clamp down on illicit, immoral, illegal, criminal goings-on at body rub parlors? We have had police raids. We have seen underage girls in this place. We have seen human trafficking. We've seen, you know, cases of teenage boys left with lifelong STDs. What else do we need? And every time we go to close it down, they circum, they find a way to circumvent the law and on paper, change ownership. Surely, the tribunal cannot be so blind. Surely, we have to tap into some provincial legislation that could help us. What is wrong with the system?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I think we could apply this question across many instances where illegal or improper activity is occurring. We deal with that which is illegal, what is contrary to legislation, be it provincial, federal, or otherwise. We deal with the municipal side. Certainly, from a policing perspective, they deal with the criminal issues that may be occurring. The fact of the matter is that every person is entitled to due process. Every person is entitled to a judicial approach in dealing with the issues and the allegations. So we need to respect those processes and the administration of justice when we're dealing with issues. We do have authorities, whether it be in the City of Toronto Act, through closure orders, prohibition orders, probation orders, other tools, but those are subject to a judicial process and a judicial finding.
But the judicial process is not working for us. We've gone through a system where we've shut them down for three months, they reopen. We say you cannot open after 9:00 PM. They're flagrantly open after 9:00 PM. In fact, they open at 9:00 PM.
Yeah.
The system is not working for us. What else can we do? What motions can we move today to make it easier for you to clamp down on this criminal activity?
So through you, Madam Speaker, just for clarity, Counselor Aldridge Mary, I do not deal with criminal activity. It is the mandate of the Toronto Police Service, and we partner with them as they address their mandate with criminal conduct, and our responsibility is to ensure that the bylaws enacted by this council are enforced, as we have varying tools under these various streams of legislation. There is legislation that exists on the criminal side with the Civil Remedies Act, and there is due process and the Attorney General's engagement and quite a lengthy process that needs to be followed there to get to where you're trying to get to. On our side, again, it's got to go through a judicial process. People are entitled. It's the beauty of Canada, democratic system, democratic process, and people are entitled. And unfortunately, and I've had this conversation with many, sometimes that takes time, and we just continue to be as perseverant as we can be.
Thank you. Counselor Wong Tam, questions?
Yes, thank you very much. Is MLS aware of reports of sexual harassment and sexual abuse involving City of Toronto bylaw enforcement officers during their holistic centre inspections?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I am aware that at the committee and at a meeting prior to that committee, Counselor Wong Tam, that a group of individuals did come forward indicating generally concern around conduct.
And did we, you and I, not have a conversation at the Scarborough Civic Centre the day that the executive committee met, that I had also heard those similar concerns?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, you did advise me that that's why we wanted to have that meeting and hear their concerns.
Okay, and at that time afterwards, I've now heard from you on that day and also in reading the media, that you intend to launch an immediate investigation into the conduct and the enforcement practices of those officers. Is this correct?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I have a challenge to reference it as an immediate investigation when I have a series of very general, unfounded, and let me correct that, undetermined locations or individuals. However, I will say, any complaints around conduct, I do take very seriously. We will, we are reviewing what we have been doing in this realm to understand what has happened. I have also indicated we are extremely open and very much encourage individuals who can share with me information that I can then investigate, that it will be investigated. It's very difficult with generalities around conduct. I am still very concerned and will be looking at how we are approaching our business and take what steps are necessary, as is necessary, based on any information that I'm provided.
That was a lot of words.
I know, sorry.
Yeah, and I wonder, in there, is there an investigation? Like, these are very serious allegations around sexual harassment, sexual abuse by or by law officers, and you re-categorize them as concerns and that you're going to review policies. So I just need to know, is there going to be an investigation, which is what these individuals have been asking for, which is what the legal clinics who've come to their defense have been asking for, including human rights organizations, legal networks, as well as labor organizations? Is there going to be an investigation? Yes or no, please?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I guess it's a matter of terminology and what I consider an investigation and maybe what others consider an investigation. What I will say to you is that I absolutely take seriously the issues, the allegations, the concerns raised, and to say that we are going to investigate those circumstances, yes. Do I have an investigation into any specifics? No, because I have not been provided those. But I am absolutely committed to ensuring that we are approaching our work in the most appropriate manner. I do believe in most cases, in all cases, my staff try to do that. If there are instances where that is not the case, then the appropriate investigation and action will be taken? Absolutely.
If, okay, we'll get back to the investigation point at some time. Have you heard from the practitioners or from your staff by way of their attendance at the meetings that I've asked them to attend? Have you heard that there are allegations of sexual, sorry, racial targeting and racial harassment? That's why human rights organizations have gotten involved. Have you heard that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I have been advised that a number of various issues, concerns, you can call them allegations, have been raised. We have no specifics. We have nothing to start with other than looking at generally, how are we approaching our work? And I strongly encourage, if someone has any information or any specific allegations that they want to bring to our attention, we will facilitate that and we will address them.
Have you read the report from the Holistic Practitioners Association, which actually outlines a survey that they did with their members based on the experiences that they've had with bylaw enforcement officers? Like, you can start from there. They've spoken to 100 practitioners. Have you read that report?
So through you, Madam Speaker, no, I have not read that report specifically, councillor. I do have concerns where people are making allegations that my officers are conducting themselves and being racially motivated. I think that's a very significant and serious allegation. I, as I mentioned, this is an extremely complex and extremely sensitive issue in how, what is going on in our city and how we are being tasked or expected to address these issues. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of discussions for us to have.
You're going to be doing consultation with the stakeholders between September and October of this year. That work is going to go, move forward because it's part of your work plan. Is there any reason why we can't refer the entire document back to you and not suspend these, the associations, sorry, the centres right now and have you still do the consultations and come back after your investigation?
That was your last question.
After the consultation, so you have a more wholesome report for us?
So through you, Madam Speaker, my recommendation, Counselor Wong Tam, was to put a moratorium on these five PHAs that have been affiliated with the locations where 98% of our charges have been laid while we undertake this review. It was supported by the finding of the Auditor General and her review of our work. I felt it was our responsibility where we believe the legitimacy or the nature of the regulation that's being purportedly provided by these holistic associations are not being provided, that we are responsible to ensure that the intent of the bylaw is upheld. So I respectfully believe that by putting the moratorium on these five that represent the bulk of our charges and our issues is an important thing to be done today. But I also, the purpose of bringing this report and the work plan was to reiterate our commitment to reviewing these two articles of our licensing bylaw and coming back with a fulsome report that respects and reflects the inputs of as many stakeholders as we can.
Counselor Burnside.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff, I just want to follow up on some questions that Counselor Wong Tam asked, and she referred or asked you about the survey done by the holistic association and whether or not you'd read it. Which holistic association do you think she might have been talking about? Aren't there more than one?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we do have 37 holistic associations that have been approved through the committee and council process in prior years. I'm unfortunately unaware.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to keep moving. So 37. There's obvious, would you say there's a credibility issue with some of these holistic associations, whether they're actually legitimate?
So through you, Madam Speaker, the recommendation that we've made about putting a moratorium on accepting applications are those related to five, where we have affiliated the bulk of our charges?
The short answer is yes.
I would say we have a concern around the ability of these associations to do what they're supposed to do.
Okay, in terms of the allegations of racial profiling, if you will, and sexual harassment, I'm not sure if you're privy to the, let me ask it this way. Are these from workers or businesses that have been found to be legitimate?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I don't know specifically who made the allegations.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Is it quite possible that some of the allegations came from illegitimate businesses?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I think it's a possibility that allegations came from a variety of people who share concerns.
Thank you. And, oh, sorry, I just have a lot of questions, and I don't mean to be rude. Let me just ask you this one last question, then I want to get on to the human trafficking angle or perspective. In terms of the number of charges that have been laid, I think in the last couple of years, it's a few hundred?
Over the last three years, we've laid over 1,000.
Okay. Would it be safe to say you could probably have laid 10,000?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Is it safe to say that you probably could have laid 10,000? That the number of operations that advertise operating late, that aren't actually holistic, those sorts of things, that really you've just scratched that tip of the iceberg, as it were?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I think it is clear that the intended actions of licensing around the holistics has been exploited by those who would choose to operate as something other than that. Over the last three years, we've issued over about 1,600 charges, and there's over 400 locations of concern.
Okay, thank you. My big concern is actually on the human trafficking issue. And I know in December 2013, MLS was directed to work with police and other stakeholders in addressing human trafficking in Toronto. And I read a report from the Canadian Women's Foundation in the fall of 2014 about ending sex trafficking in Canada, and it referenced that social development was the lead in these efforts and that they were apparently going to work with MLS in drafting bylaws that would help address some of these issues. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I know as a city, we do have a working group, and we have done training and other activities in respect to human trafficking and continue those dialogues with our partners in SDFNA and other divisions.
Okay, so my question through the speaker to social development, what have you done in the last five years? I know that I haven't seen an actual report on the human trafficking. In this report that is before council, I see one paragraph in the second, last paragraph of the report, and I'm wondering what's taking so long.
Through the speaker, there have been reports to council. I can't remember the exact date. I will look that up for you, councillor. We are planning and coming back to council early in 2019 with an update. We have been working both internally with all impacted divisions or divisions who might have a role, so primarily MLS, but Toronto Police Service, Shelter Support and Housing, Affordable Housing Office. In fact, the city has provided housing opportunities for victims of human trafficking through the Affordable Housing Office, working with community partners. We also are working deeply with external community partners on this issue. It is an incredibly complex issue, which is why we haven't had a report soon.
Okay, so to quote Counselor Wong Tam, that's a lot of words. So what I got from that is it's going to be 2019, which is six years after council asked or directed social development and MLS to work together before we're actually going to see further recommendations and to... going to see further recommendations, and to date, what you've done is provide some housing.
That was the last question.
Correct, Counselor, the city has provided housing. We've also done deep training with staff to help staff understand the issues associated.
Thank you. Okay, if I could, if I could have the clerk ring the bells, I'd like to have all the members of council in the council chambers, please. Yeah, no, can you just wait, Counselor Fletcher? I want to make sure, I want to know how many councillors we have. If I can have all members of council to take their seats. Okay. Thank. We have some members' motions that need to be introduced and be dealt with today, so, Counselor.
Can I move that? Speaker, can I move that we introduce the members' motions? And I have one correction.
Yeah, we're going to do that, Counselor Fletcher. Yes, we're going to do that. Counselor Matlow.
Do they have it on the screen? I believe that I'm about to speak to an OMB settlement, request for direction.
Who is? There are all kinds of requests for directions that have to get approved.
Pardon? Okay, can everyone press their?
We have a forum, it's.
No, Counselor Matlow, hold on, hold on. Can everyone, can members of council press their buttons so we know how many members are here? We need 30 members in the council chambers.
Madam Speaker, there are 28 members in the chamber.
So, Counselor Mehavik and Counselor Ainsley, they were here earlier, are they around? Counselor Ainsley's left?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Mehavik, are you around? Counselor Ainsley?
Counselor Campbell is going to let you do Fletcher's.
Well.
You can do Fletcher's reopening.
Okay, Counselor Fletcher, we can do your reopening.
Yes, I'd like to reconsider, a motion to reconsider in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 27, Council Procedures, City Council, reconsider item 31.8, please.
Okay, on favor, carried. Okay, now, you wanted to?
To delete the attachment one to the supplementary report, replace it with a new attachment one that's attached to the motion, which was advanced circulated earlier. You have it. Would you like to move that, please?
On favor, carried. Okay, if we, if we, Campbell or Counselor Ainsley and Counselor Mehavik come in here, we can deal with the urgent matter to introduce a motion, but now we're going to do quick releases. Put your name in the middle, in the middle, if you have a quick release. Counselor DeBaer-Maker.
Josh, you ready?
Okay, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine's quite urgent, because we need to allow the general manager or give him the authority to work on this contamination issue, so I've pre-circulated a motion.
Which item are we?
It's, I'm sorry, it's PW 28.8, it's a public works, an infrastructure item, related to the state of the Blue Bin Recycling Program, and my motion was pre-circulated to everybody. I've had a lot of good feedback from councillors about it, so I'd like to move that now. I'm going to tell you later.
Okay, so, are members okay with it?
Can I get a recorded vote? Or no, we can't? Can we do a recorded vote? It doesn't matter, just vote, it doesn't matter.
Well, apparently, apparently there's also a motion from Counselor Mehavik, and he's not here.
Counselor Dussetts okayed it.
No, but Counselor Mehavik.
No, but she knows, she knows.
We're here now.
Yeah, we don't need a recorded vote. Woo, let's go.
On favor, have the amendment carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried. Counselor DeBaer-Maker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As a quick item, page five, under Member Motions, MM 39.24, parking at new Line One subway stations. I had a opportunity to talk with Counselor Perutsa, city staff and TTC staff, everybody's fine with it, and it's a request for the TTC to consider the parking lots in the new line, so we're all happy and good.
Are you happy?
Well, it's a request, it's a request for TTC to consider, yes.
Okay, Counselor Perks has asked for recorded vote, recorded vote.
Counselor Phelan, please. The motion does not carry, or the item does not carry, the vote is 12 to 15.
Counselor Matlow.
Madam Speaker, I'm going to release on page four, T 31.14, 1925 to 1951, Young Street, 17 to 21 Millwood Road, and there is an amendment that I, which is, it's minor wording that reflects what the Director of Education, through Robin Pilkey, the Chair of the TDSP, has asked for, that just better interprets.
Okay, Counselor Matlow, I'm running out of time.
Sorry, I was just explaining.
Okay, so, you want to release it? Page four, T 31.14, on, on the amendment, on favor, carried, item is amended, on favor, carried. So, Counselor Perks, would you just like to move a motion just to finish the quick items?
Yes, I'd like to move to extend the meeting to finish the quick items.
We have a committee meeting.
It'll take three minutes, guys.
Two minutes?
We're past 12:30.
Yeah, I know, just two minutes. Yes. Okay, I can only deal with one councillor at a time. Yes, Counselor Fletcher?
I only want to take one second, in case we don't have quorum today, to simply remark that Counselor Chin sent his retirement notice to us today. He's not here, but in case we're not back, this would be his last meeting, and officially through us all, we'd like to thank him very much for his great contribution. He's not here, but we might, if he comes back, we'll do it again. Okay.
Okay. Okay, on, yes, on Counselor Perks's motion on favor, just for two minutes, okay? Okay, we're just doing quick releases. Counselor Phelan.
Yes, page five, CC 39.11, it's a simple referral to North York Community Council. This is a legal and planning report, that legal and planning are fine with it being referred. There's some time urgency to the referral in order for it to get back here in time. So, I'll read it out, the City Council refer item.
Yeah, no, it's okay, we can, we can, okay, it's on the screen, the referral motion on favor, carried. Counselor Holliday, quickly.
I do, members' motion, Counselor Matlow's members' motion, I'm ready to release that. MM 39.32, bottom of page five.
Okay.
Just a concert, we have for Holliday amendments that have been, this is the problem when you speak with staff, they actually try to make it work, so there are amendments on it that have been drafted by staff.
I'm going to ask that question. Okay, the amendment is there?
Thank you.
Yes, that's good.
On favor, carried. Okay, item is amended, recorded vote. Okay, now, members, before, before we recess for lunch, I need members of council, members of council that are, that are not going to be here after lunch, if you can please, how many are coming back?
I'm coming back.
First, our president said we're coming back.
Okay. We'll take a vote, because if we're not coming back, we're going to have to do the bills and defer everything to the next council meeting, because I've been trying to say this all morning. Yes.
Counselor by law, please.
Jane.
Counselor Perutsa.
Counselor Phelan, please.
Counselor Shan, please.
The item is amended, carries unanimously, 26 in favor.
Okay, so, can I, can I, can you press your buttons if you're coming back after lunch?
Well, we should all come back, yes.
Yes, you're coming back.
Yeah, that's right.
Counselor Pasternak, we need you to push your button if you're coming back after lunch.
Read for yes, ready for no.
Some people are coming back to finish the agenda, just coming back.
Madam Speaker, 24 councillors have indicated that they are coming back, two have indicated that they are not.
They are?
No, the mayor is coming back, that's what I was told.
That's Barr Quorm.
Okay, that's Barr Quorm. I merge your members of council, please. Okay, and apparently Counselor Campbell is coming back. I don't know, but Counselor Mehavik or Counselor Ainsley, they just disappeared, we have no idea where they are.
So, we can't have Counselor Matlow, because we can't have.
Yeah. So, Counselor Matlow, as far as your motion to introduce, I'm sorry, but we don't have 30 members, so we can't do it.
Then I'm going to have to talk to legal.
Motion to recess, and please be back by two, thank you. This is awful. Yuli, this is the first.